Good evening. It is 7:03 PM and I am calling tonight's meeting of the National Board of Education to order. It is Tuesday, May 28, 2019, and we are in the Nashua North Boardroom. Mr. Guarino, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Oden?
Here.
Ms. Raymond?
Here.
Mr. Kaufman?
Here.
Mr. Mosher?
I'm here.
Mr. Mosher is joining us by telephone. Are you by yourself, Mr. Mosher, tonight?
I am.
Thank you. Ms. Van Twyver?
Present.
Mr. Guarino is here. Ms. Hohensie?
Present.
Ms. Timmons?
Here.
Ms. Porter?
Here.
Dr. Mosley? Dr. McKinney?
Here.
Ms. Fitzpatrick?
Here.
Mr. Donovan?
Here.
Ms. O'Gara?
Here.
And Mr. Ead is not with us tonight. Ms. Scales? We have a quorum.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Guarino. All right. Mr. Guarino, if you could please lead us in the prayer. And Dr. Mosley, could you lead us in the pledge this evening?
Please stand. Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty of managing the educational institutions of our beloved city. In our common endeavors, may we find a spirit of unity and understanding which will enable us to face our multiple problems with an objective mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will be for the betterment and greater happiness of all of our fellow citizens. Amen.
Amen. I pledge to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, it's my understanding that we do not have a presentation this evening, correct, Dr. Mosley?
Correct.
Okay. So, moving right along, it is now time for the consent agenda. Did anyone have any items that they wish to be removed from the consent agenda? Ms. Hohensie?
Thank you. I'd like to remove the Board of Education minutes from May 13. Please.
Second.
Okay. Did you wish to speak to that? Oh, I guess we'll speak to it after.
I'd love to. Yes.
Okay. Anything else? No? I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of the May 13 meeting minutes.
So, who's?
Okay. Second, someone?
Second.
Thank you.
On the motion to approve the consent agenda without the minutes from May 13, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Sure. Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion passes nine to zero.
Okay. Ms. Hohensie?
Thank you. Two different things. One, I think that there was hours of public comments last time that were reduced in the meeting minutes to a simple vote on campus versus off-campus of the Jay Ratzie marksmanship program. That vote could have been taken less than five minutes if that's all the board was interested in knowing. It's a controversial topic, and I think it deserves more in-depth documentation of public opinion. So, I'm asking the President if she will instruct our secretary to do a little bit more in-depth.
Okay. Ms. Van Twyver, do you recollect what has been done historically?
Not really, Madam President. I don't think we ever had comments that long, maybe once before. But it would be taxing, I think, for Ms. Jackie to transcribe all that.
Yeah, I agree.
But maybe if she could consolidate the ideas.
Okay.
Although, I don't know, is that acceptable? I don't know.
Well, I'm not sure. I'm willing to speak with her about it and see if a compromise can be reached.
Okay. Then, the second issue was, "The public minutes from May 13 must include the objections that I made regarding the non-public session. There was a change in the right to know law. Failure to update the minutes would violate the right to know law." I've got a copy of it here, but it was changed in the last two years. The members' names, a statement, what was objected in the discussion, and a reference to the provision should be made in the public minutes, not in the non-public minutes. I mean, that could also be in there, but it's now supposed to be noted in the public. I made three objections during the non-public discussion when board members discussed the wording for a motion to suspend. Motion shouldn't be discussed in non-public, so that should be there. Based on those discussions, the board president didn't allow me to make any motion or amend a motion because she knew which board members would make an agreeable motion. So, that was objectionable.
Okay. I'm gonna stop you right there. For one thing, you're misrepresenting. For another, I would like to see what you have written and discuss it with Jackie, who is in charge of our minutes, and then we'll let her and perhaps Attorney Clausen advise us as to the appropriate way to move forward with this.
They can do that for how to note it in the public, but I have other objections that I found.
Okay. If you have found other objections that...
I don't want to be shut down.
I'm sorry. If you're gonna discuss things in non-public and we don't have...
Not discussing non-public, I'm discussing objections that should be noted.
That's made in the non-public.
Right.
So, until I have a ruling from our board attorney...
There's no ruling needed.
My recommendation is that we not discuss it so that you don't get into a position where you have discussed things in non-public in a public fashion and inadvertently violated the law. Now, if Mr. Clausen believes that you are correct, wonderful. I think that would be great. Then, we can certainly read it out at the next board meeting, and we can have our administrative assistant put it in the minutes. But I don't want to enter in a situation where you're aware of a change that the rest of us are not aware of, and we accidentally do it.
I can read it to you.
No, I would like to consult with the attorney on this.
Well, I'd like to put my objections in the minutes, and then they can decide what they want to do with them.
Not this evening. You may hand it to me. I will bring it to Attorney Clausen and to our administrative assistant.
Well, my point is that the information we got in non-public was in the public domain.
Ms. Hohensie, we voted nine to zero to seal the minutes.
That was...
That would tend to indicate, I'm sorry, eight to zero, to seal the minutes. That would tend to indicate that we were all in consensus that the minutes ought to be sealed under the right to know law. If you have changed your mind...
Yes.
That is your right to do so, but I am not gonna entertain discussion of this matter further.
Because information came through for the right to know law.
No, because it's not an appropriate venue for doing it until we have vetted it with our attorney. If you would like to challenge my decision, you are welcome to challenge that.
I'm not gonna challenge it because I know what the result would be.
Okay, good.
I'd like to know when would the...
Please hand your objection over, either now or at the end of the meeting, and I will make sure it gets to Attorney Clausen. If you don't trust me to do that, you are welcome to email it to him yourself.
I will meet with Attorney Clausen, and I'll hand him to him.
Fine.
But I may publicize them in the interim.
That is your absolute right to make that decision.
It is my right to do that because I don't like being censored.
However, I do advise you to get advice from our attorney before you post something that could potentially be in violation of right to know, especially given that the board as a whole voted to seal those minutes. Now, not being an attorney, you know, I don't...
I thought it over carefully, and I was not gonna say anything that would violate the right to know.
Well, good.
I do have that clearly understood.
I'm glad. So, moving on, we have removed these two items from the consent agenda. We have a plan moving forward regarding those two items. I will speak with Jackie Waters about making sure that the public comments in the minutes from the last meeting have a little bit more meat to them, and then I will report back to the board. We will also discuss Ms. Hohensie's other item with our board attorney. Okay. Are there any communications outside the consent agenda?
Comment?
Yes, hold on. Let Mr. Mosher go first, please.
Excuse me. I believe that it was not too long ago that we had a discussion on right to know with the Corporation Council. And I would suggest, being that the Chair has spoken, that we can use both of the attorneys to clarify any problem with the right to know law. And as far as I am aware, I don't see any problem that we have had with the right to know law. Because even if we are using a unrevised version of it, it still carries the force of law. So, I think Ms. Hohensie and her research and her presentation should do just that, to consult with the attorneys on the right to know and present her discussion. If we are wrong, we will admit it. If she is wrong, I think it would be prudent for her to also admit that she had made a mistake. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Mr. Kaufman?
No issue here. I'm sorry, Madam Chair. It was approved in the consent agenda, so it would be late for me to discuss it.
Okay. Thank you. All right. We have now come to our public comment and question period. As I said prior to the meeting, other, certain individuals were not able to speak at our last meeting due to the late hour, so I have expanded the public comment period for this meeting and placed it at the beginning of the meeting. If anyone has not signed up, here's the sign-up sheet. Please do so. I can make another one so that everyone who would like to can have a chance to speak. Yes, Ms. Van Twyver?
Madam President, I'd like to ensure that those people who were not able to speak last time will be able to speak tonight, whether we do 30 minutes or more.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Agreed. It is not my intention to stifle. That is why I wanted to move it to the beginning of the meeting. Okay? Okay. So, I have, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, we have 10 people signed up to speak. We have 30 minutes, so if we could keep ourselves to around three minutes, that would be fair to everyone. The first person on the list is Bob Duffy. Mr. Duffy, are you familiar with the green light and pressing the button?
Yes, thank you. Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. My issue that I plan on speaking and addressing is the behavior of the board with regards to...
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Duffy. Our camera person is letting us know that you're not being picked up on the microphone.
Oh, all right.
So, perhaps if we adjust the microphone?
Name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, yes.
And name and address.
Yes. My name is Bob Duffy. I live at 7 Brick Manor Drive here in Nashua. And I'm here tonight to speak on one issue, which is the behavior of the board in regards to censuring an individual member of the board and the methods in which it was disseminated such that the member of the board was ridiculed publicly. And outside organizations have contributed to the distress of that member. It should never happen like that. As an elected member and not an employee, the board is paid to work together to settle issues amicably. And I believe that it can be done. I believe that whatever issues there are can be handled, and I'm sure that in the past situations like this have come up also. I have belonged to many different organizations in the past 40 years, and there have been times where there's been one person that was in disagreement with the rest of the board, but they still have worked things out. Now, those organizations were not paid civic organizations as this is. And this organization has more of a responsibility than a nonprofit or a private club, which is what I'm more familiar with. But I believe Doris Hohensie should be given the right to rebut any of these claims, and I don't think it was appropriate for it to be announced publicly before it was discussed among the members of the board. And that's about all I have to say at this moment, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Diane Lothrup?
My name is Diane Lothrup. I live at 10 Althea Lane in Nashua. And I'm here tonight in support of Board of Education member Doris Hohensie. I urge Ms. Hohensie not to resign. She has been in the past and is still now the target of a witch hunt by most members of this board, Superintendent Mosley, and by the Nashua Teachers Union, because her views do not match your partisan views. To me, this is despicable and unprofessional. Doris did not out the student. The student did that by posting it on Facebook herself. Then, another person from Gate City Politics, it's a Facebook group, posted it to their 500-plus members, and the union leader reporter chose not to include that fact in her article. This is called bias of omission, meaning not telling the whole story. The problem with Facebook that all schoolchildren need to learn is that whatever you say on Facebook isn't secret anymore once you post it. It stays in hyperspace. The privacy of the student wasn't a concern with everyone until it became politically expedient. When Ms. Hohensie posted a comment in response to the posts, you all pounced on it and another chance to attack her. This is clearly a coordinated and premeditated political hit on Ms. Hohensie. And shame on you all. You are influencing the lives of Nashua's young people, and this isn't one of your proudest moments. And I'm disgusted with your comment, your conduct, I should say. Doris, again, I urge you not to resign. You have given countless hours of your time to this city and to this Board of Education, and I, for one, am proud of you for standing up to your principles. Thank you.
Thank you. Charles Lothrup?
Charles Lothrup, 10 Althea Lane here in Nashua. I'm here in support of Doris Hohensie, and I ask her not to resign because of the pressure you're bringing against her. I feel that it's a Board of Education coup, and it's based on falsehoods and personal animosity toward her. I think I speak for most taxpayers. I wish you'd give up this witch hunt against her and get on with the taxpayers' business. Thank you.
Thank you. Marie Muller?
Hi, I'm Marie Muller. I live at 18 Natick Street here in Nashua, and I'm simply here to support Doris and ask her to not resign. Doris has been putting in an awful lot of hours here, and she was elected to this position, and it should only be the taxpayers at Election Day that would remove her. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeffrey Kream?
Jeffrey Kream, 7 Celeste Street, Nashua. I've recently read quite a few disturbing accusations against Board Member Doris Hohensie in the paper and online recently, including accusations from other members of the school board that appear to have been made in a meeting that potentially violates New Hampshire RSA 91A2. In reading these accusations, it reminded me of a quote, "If you're not careful, the newspapers will have you hating the people who are being oppressed and loving those who are doing the oppressing." This is a quote from Malcolm X. Now, I recognize the danger of quoting Malcolm X in front of the school board since I clearly don't agree with everything he's written. However, he's a brilliant activist, at times flawed, who ultimately was a positive influence in the nation. Quoting someone does not mean that you agree with everything they ever said, but it certainly does imply some level of endorsement for what was quoted. Is there something immaterial that Ms. Hohensie quoted that should be interpreted as racist? I looked at it, and I didn't see it, but I do know that some members of the board have made accusations or veiled accusations to that extent. Next is a matter of sharing a student's public Facebook post. I first became aware of this post on a Nashua politics page, which was shared publicly, actually, in a Gate City politics page by a non-board member. I don't actually know the order of which things were shared, but that is certainly where I first became aware of it. When a student decides to get involved in public policy discussions, there are certainly reasons to tread carefully. However, neither side of the debate should use children as human shields designed to initiate conflict but then recoil in horror when their public statements are called into question. Finally, the open letter that was published after an apparently illegal meeting makes the claim that the school board member shared the name and contact information for the student. But other than sharing of a public post on a public profile, I'm aware of no such sharing. I do, however, see the home address of Doris posted in the letter from the school board, and while such information is fairly public, the inclusion of this information in the open letter was clearly meant to intimidate. As a citizen of Nashua, I seek the resignation of Heather Raymond from the school board as it is clear that she has a fostering divisive behavior at the board and sought to hold a private chain meeting of the board to prepare an attack on Ms. Hohensie. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Adams?
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I know I'm not a resident, but I have some input, I think, that's germane to the situation. I've served on several different school boards, about six and a half years, spent two years on our House Education Committee, so I'm fairly familiar. Excuse me. I've got a bit of an allergy going. Fairly familiar with this situation. I myself have gone through a very similar situation as a member of a board where certain circumstances were used to actually call for censure of myself and other board member with material information taken from minutes and hearsay from what was a public forum at the time, crafted into a message, and then broadcast, not to us, but out to the media and the local forums, Facebook and such, just as has happened here. So, it's very personal to me, this process that I see going on for poor Doris. This board has really need to think about what they're doing, and it was said well before. You folks represent the constituencies that vote you in, censure while a black mark on the record of the person you're censuring, and there's also a black mark on the board. It shows some dysfunction within that board that you can't take a dissenting opinion, honestly hear that opinion, then argue it. That's the point of a board, right? Sharing ideas, sharing input from the community. That shows this board is actually, I believe, a bit dysfunctional because of that. And that's sometimes, I apologize, Chair, but, you know, that is a focus of leadership and administration as well. If you can't control the board, you can't get input from all board members honestly and accept that input without having to censure them, to put them in a situation where they're accused of what potentially may or may not be the truth. I think that's a problem, and it's a disservice to our communities and, you know, our state as a whole as well. I myself, you know, it wasn't hurtful to me financially and/or politically, if you will, but the other individual that had served with me that was attacked initially, she had to spend $5,000 plus in legal fees to actually defend herself and defend, you know, her positions on that board. You folks are gonna be burning through a lot of money, I'm sure, you know, consulting lawyers every day, you know, because of this dysfunction. And that's actually the unfortunate part, is you have to go for a legal opinion and actually take the taxpayers' money and spend it on what is really unproductive and not educationally focused. So, I urge you folks to really think about what you're doing when you vote on a censure or attack another member for dissenting opinion, that you're causing all sorts of other issues down the road, and you're not doing your primary job, once again. You're not focusing on education, you're focusing on politics. And that, I believe, does a disservice to this town and to your board. Thank you very much for letting me speak here. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Could we please get his address? I know he's not a resident, but...
Yes, I have it.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's...
Oh, sorry. It is written down. I apologize.
10 Sargent Road, Brooklyn, New Hampshire.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Elizabeth Ferrera?
Sorry, I stumbled. I wanted to make sure I made my best effort to pronounce her last name correctly.
Can you hear me? Okay. Thank you, Madam President, and members of the Board of Education. My name's Elizabeth Ferrera. I live on Broad Street here in Nashua, and I'm one of the folks who came here two weeks ago to speak in support of Doris. We waited four hours, but the board voted to end the meeting before we could speak. Earlier today, a friend texted me wanting to know if I'd be here again. I said yes. Her response was, "I really don't want to go." And I'm thinking, she probably doesn't want to go for a number of reasons. She's an early riser, has to work early. She spent four hours here already, in vain. She doesn't care for a lot of political theater and drama, and she probably...
Mr. Mosher?
Yes?
Okay. Sorry, we got a little background noise there.
And she probably also sees that, from the back, from the breakdown of the board membership, perhaps there really isn't that much interest in what we have to say, or that we'll even be able to persuade you not to censure Ms. Hohensie. Still, she added, "And yet, everything internally tells me that I should be here tonight." And I agreed. Because why put ourselves through this again? Why subject ourselves to also being labeled racist, or bigoted, or haters? For me, it's a matter of standing up for someone who has been unfairly maligned and whose actions have been grossly misrepresented. Even our local paper here, The Nashua Telegraph, muddied the waters in its early reporting on the matter Saturday, May 11. In the first paragraph, it makes reference to Mrs. Hohensie's quote, alleged pronazi remarks. The quote by Stoddard cited in Doris's controversial Facebook posting had absolutely no racist or anti-Semitic content, none. But the Telegraph reporter either didn't do their due diligence, or perhaps may have wanted to fanned the fuels of controversy. In the few years I've known Doris, maybe about seven-ish or so, I've never heard her make a racist statement or say anything that would imply that she held such beliefs. Because if I believed that she were a bigot and she were looking to spread such beliefs, I'd be perfectly willing to let her twist in the wind. But I don't believe that. On the contrary, even before she was elected to the Board of Education, I've known Doris to always be willing to help Nashua parents, whether it was their children, whether their children attended public or private school, regardless of their religious, ethnic, or racial background, regardless of whether they were recent immigrants or had longtime roots in this country. She always made a point of informing, helping them navigate the administration, and advocating tirelessly, I should say, on their behalf, and more importantly, advocating on behalf of their children. In fact, I doubt that anyone here truly believes that Doris is a racist or an anti-Semite. But to paraphrase that old law of propaganda, if you repeat the lie often enough, it becomes the truth. This is an attempt to silence Doris Hohensie. She asks too many inconvenient questions. She demands transparency. She questions the wisdom of SEL, which is social emotional learning. In short, she helps keep this board from being an echo chamber. And if we truly care about diversity, we should not be afraid of diversity of opinions, even when they're inconvenient or they challenge us. But her opponents need to make her go away. They need to wear her down. They need to discourage her. And if she won't go away willingly, attempt to discredit her in the eyes of the public, at least before the next election. And what better way to do so than to accuse her of racism? Because in today's society, if you can make an accusation of racism stick, you can render someone a non-person politically, and endorse his case, I'm sure they hope, politically as well. It's a highly effective form of character assassination. Render her a non-person. Make her opinions irrelevant. Make her disappear. But, Mrs. Hohensie, I hope you do not disappear. I hope you choose to stay and fight. I hope you choose to stay and fight. Ms. Raymond and Superintendent Mosley, unfortunately, you have also contributed to this character assassination by having misrepresented and distorted the facts in your letters or press releases several weeks ago. I ask that you two publicly apologize to Ms. Hohensie for your role in this drama and for misrepresenting the facts. Your integrity is at stake. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sonya Prince.
Hello, Sonya Prince, 49, Tufts Drive. I'm going to disagree with all these people. I do think Mrs. Hohensie should resign for multiple reasons. This is not a witch hunt, by the way. I have all the screenshots of everything she's said that are pretty atrocious, in my opinion, whether it's the Theodore Stoddard white supremacist article, who this guy is known. His bestseller book was "The Rising Tide of Color Against White World Supremacy," and he believes white skin heritage is superior to people with darker skin. I mean, common sense, just common sense, really. I'm the one that people keep talking about, the Gate City politics. I'm the one who posted on a private page for Nashua, inviting people to a meeting. I did not go on a granite block...
Ms. Prince, Second Amendment Facebook site that is statewide, inviting people to go to a student's page, nor did I serve on the school board or take a oath to protect students. So I think Ms. Prince...
Those decisions, you're not being picked up.
Oh, sorry. Those two decisions, the white supremacy article that she posted was atrocious. I mean, it's natural equality. Need I say more? Do your research. But she doesn't like when students speak up. One example is when the students did the walkout for the gun safety. They were upset. All the mass shootings, she was absolutely upset about that. She discourages kids from speaking out. One student spoke out, and she sent a statewide Facebook group who are pro-Second Amendment to go make atrocious comments on her page. I mean, ridiculous, ridiculous. There's other ways of handling so. Common sense decisions matter in this school board, and I think she should think twice and maybe not be in this role. I don't think it's for her. I'm sorry that she might have put a lot of hours there, but taking good decisions also matters. We're talking about children. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Prince.
If anybody wants a copy of all the screenshots, they're right here.
Next, we have Joan Donahue. Ms. Donahue, I don't have your address on this sheet, so I will need you to give us that. I'm pretty sure we need the street address, ma'am.
I'm pretty sure if I give you my street address, I would be very frightful of police showing up at my door, and that's the reason why I don't give my street address, because it's unsafe.
Okay. Thank you.
I requested a right-to-know packet after the last meeting, after we waited for four hours. As you can imagine, I was upset. You know I was upset. Four hours was a long time to wait. Two and a half hours of that time were students coming in and expressing their fear wasn't on the agenda. So I felt like I needed to look and see what happened, where was the breakdown, what happened to the student representatives? That the students all came, and you didn't know it, they weren't on the list, they were all talking out of turn. So I've got two pieces of information on my right-to-know. One on what we're presently talking about, which is censoring Doris Hohensie. Shame on you. In America, as Americans, we have freedom of thought, we have freedom of expression. We have freedoms that they don't have anywhere else in the world, nowhere else in the world. All of this talk about racism and Nazism and anti-Semitism, and I thought that was so last century. I didn't know where it came from. It's just coming up again. It's ugly. It's been tried. It works for a short time, but it's usually the people slinging that stuff that are projecting their own values. So I would ask that all of the labeling just stop. I'm also asking for unity on the board. I think there's too much diversity. I think there's too much emphasis on separating people based on whatever perceived differences they have. Part of the agenda is supposed to be inclusive, part of it is supposed to be equitable, part of it is supposed to be diverse. We've got a diverse school board. It's not equitable. It's not inclusive. One of the earliest school board meetings, when committees were being assigned, President Raymond, you chose not to put two people on various committees that they wanted. That was your prerogative. But boy, was it arrogant and condescending when you said, "Thank you for your historical perspective and thank you for your participation," to people who should be included on curriculum, finance, all of the boards that they wanted to be on, you chose not to do it. The work isn't getting done. This school board isn't doing the work that needs to be done. There hasn't been, I haven't seen anything in the minutes this year addressing the substitute shortage. That was my concern before. It continues to be my concern. We're getting waylaid because you're trying to label Doris and force her to resign. Doris isn't going to resign. She's very strong. She's very smart. She has a different opinion. This board should be able to listen to different opinions respectfully, without labeling. The other thing that I wanted to talk about was, and you can censor her all you want, it just really makes you folks look like fools, because you're the ones doing the mudslinging. And you might have Facebook pages and people read them. I don't do social media. I don't belong to any groups. You won't find me on a startup. You won't find me at a protest. I don't do any of that stuff. Don't bother Googling me. The other one that I wanted to talk about, and I didn't think about it last time, was the junior ROTC program. Those folks, by the time that meeting was done, I came to support Doris, and I got an airful about the junior ROTC, and I think I got an education on social and emotional learning. We were sitting in the back of the room, and as students were coming in, other students were saying, "I thought you weren't coming. How did you get here?" "I got a call from Sonya." "Nice to meet you, Sonya." So I believe that a fair amount, just from looking at the information in this right-to-know request, there's a fair amount of information in here that appears to be put together in such a way as to quiet any of the voices in opposition. And I say that because the sergeant and the master sergeant wrote a memo asking for the marksmanship program not to go forward on the last agenda until they had all of the information needed. They knew they wouldn't be able to lobby with incomplete information on what it was going to cost, what the liabilities were, who was going to pick up the expense. You folks knew that ahead of time. Half dozen of us, eight of us, came in to speak to these issues. You asked us to wait patiently until after the private, non-public meeting. We did. And then it dawned on me, when you come out of the public, non-private meeting, and you said it was about safety after trying to fumble and figure out which RSA it fell under, what was the nature of the non-private meeting? I know someone in the audience screamed out, "What are you going into non-public for?" But it was around the junior ROTC marksmanship program, which I believe there was a fair amount of information ahead of time colluded to prevent a fair hearing for the students to be able to succeed. And I think that that's a really good example of how social and emotional learning works in the school district. We had 40 or 50 students show up. They were all fear-based, all fear-based. Nobody here was telling them how to get over their fear. They'll have arrested development over this fear of guns walking down the hall. There is a memo in this packet that suggests, I think, there's a memo in this packet that suggests there was a safety concern because somebody was walking down the hallway with a color guard rifle, and somebody got upset about it, and it snowballed from there. I'm suggesting that if the student representatives are supposed to be representing the students, that 40 or 50 students unscheduled, showing up on behalf of Sonya Prince or whoever it is with the anti-Gonna agenda is very disingenuous. It's just very disingenuous. That's not to say the students don't have fear. They do. But there's another venue for it, and that's what the student representatives are for. And I loved you when you were wearing your uniform the first time I saw you as well. But we haven't heard your voices either. So I think that social emotional learning, we got a good idea of emotion over learning. The tools weren't given to the kids in the J-RotC program to be able to succeed. It requires discipline. Anybody who shot knows that. If you want to give them tools to succeed, let it be on campus. And I think that there was an awful lot of collusion that prevented an honest discussion of that, and I suspect that the private, non-public, over whatever the issue was, had to do with something that was more policy-related and probably could have been discussed publicly. And you know what? If we don't have policies, no shame in not admitting it, just get one! That's all. Get it, bring it in, vote on it, and cut the witch hunting, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Beth Scaire.
Beth Scaire, 111 East Hobart Street. I'm here to support Doris. She was elected to the Board of Education because the voters trust her and respect her. There's not been a hint of racism in her life, and in fact, her history on the Board of Education shows quite the opposite. One huge example is Doris swung the undecided board members to choose Dr. Mosley as superintendent. Why in the world would a racist do that? Now, Ms. Raymond claims out of the blue that a single quote that Doris posted on Facebook concerning the harms of social emotional learning programs proves that she is a white supremacist. This is such a bizarre assertion that I can only surmise that you and others making it are determined to carry out a vicious smear campaign to achieve your own political ends that you don't care how foolish this accusation makes you appear. And I'm all too familiar with the vicious smear campaigns being carried out by our Nashua elected officials. Last summer, I attended a Coffee with the Mayor event, and I asked an innocent question of Mayor Jim Donchus. For some reason, he was so offended by it that he launched into a vicious smear campaign against me in front of all the people gathered there. He made a number of vicious and false accusations against me, and those in attendance believed him. I was completely shocked at what he'd done. And then, when a group of us attended a library trustees' meeting to express our concerns about an event being held at the library, again, we were smeared. Alderman Shoshana Kelly had an editorial in The Telegraph saying that we had obstructed the trustees' meeting and were there to spread hatred. Again, none of it was true. And finally, my own, my state representative, Deborah Stevens, accused me of harassing and physically assaulting people because I posted something on Facebook in support of another candidate running against her. Another vicious smear. Any of you, I'm speaking to the audience out there, to the voters of Nashua, any of you that aren't in lockstep with our elected official's beliefs could be the next victim of a smear campaign. They have no compunction about destroying the reputations of innocent people that they perceive are getting in the way of their political ambitions. They're salivating over the possibility of completely taking over our city's Board of Education, every elected seat in the city, and they're getting pretty darn close. If Doris and a few others stand in their way, Doris's presence on this board questioning their policy proposals, speaking up for the students and parents and staff who have different opinions than they do infuriates them, and they are taking no prisoners in their efforts to destroy Doris's reputation. To the voters of Nashua, look what our elected officials are doing, and ask yourself, is this how you want your city to be run? Everyone in lockstep dictating everything that goes on in your city. There is an election this fall for mayor, board of aldermen, and members of the Board of Education. Please remember this disturbing spectacle when you cast your ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Van Tiver.
Sorry, but has everybody that didn't get to speak last time spoken before we allow others?
I believe Mr. Scaire had signed up last time and did not get to speak, and so he's next on my list. Was there anyone else?
One.
Was there anyone else in the audience who was here at the last meeting and was not able to speak? Nope, that was it. If there's anybody who hasn't signed up, please feel free to sign up. I can, but then I can't read the names off in order. Yes, I could see how that would be distracting, and I apologize for that. Mr. Scaire, if you don't mind just giving us a moment.
Sure.
Thank you. I appreciate your patience. Thank you so much for your patience, Mr. Scaire. I understand you waited last time as well. I promise I will not let you leave that seat until you have spoken. I don't know if that's a threat or a promise, but...
Good evening. I'm Stephen Scaire of 111 East Hobart Street, and thank you for letting me speak, and thank you for the hard work that you do here for our children. Pick the target. Freeze it. Personalize it. Cut off the support network and isolate the target from sympathy. Go after people and not institutions. People hurt faster than institutions. That's Saul Alinsky's Rules for Atticals, number 13, and I hope I'm wrong, but that's what I'm afraid is going on here. A member of the school board, of course, has the same rights as anyone else to comment on a public post on a political issue, regardless of who posts it. Otherwise, we could silence all dissent from anyone affiliated with a school by making a student the public face of the cause. I saw it ironic in some of the posts that I saw going back and forth in the attack on Doris, that people were quoting Thomas Jefferson and his ideas of equality as opposed to equity. Thomas Jefferson said some beautiful things. Thomas Jefferson was a despicable man. He was a notorious slaveholder until he died. His slaves were sold to sell off his debt. If you read his works, he clearly has white supremacist ideas. But I wouldn't assume that anyone that quotes Thomas Jefferson in any context is a racist just because Thomas Jefferson was a racist. And one difficulty I have here is, why jump to the worst possible construction of what someone's saying? Something I'd really, I'm just really eager to know, just regarding the process, and I was puzzled by, is by what bylaw, rule, or policy a school board member, including the school board president, gets to use the resources that I'm paying for to attack another member of the school board? And I mean, I was really surprised to see on the public school network the call for the resignation for Doris. If some, my understanding is that this is a public body and that individually you have no authority. If this was a mistake and someone did act beyond his or her authority, then I'd like to hear people make mistakes. It's a mistake. If there is some sort of rule or policy or bylaw that lets the president of the board take such action, I'm really eager to find out what it is. So, thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Victoria Sanchez.
Hi, my name's Victoria Sanchez. People like Jamila know me better as Tori. I was a 2018 Nashua North graduate. I live on Charlotte Ave, here in Nashua. I also have two little siblings in the school district, and some of you may remember me as the walkout organizer. You see, I organize the walkout here at Nashua, and I also organized the March for Our Lives with another student. So I know what it's like. So I know what it's like to be on that end of Facebook. I know what it's like to have people coming at you and have people questioning your sanity or questioning your morals or your values. But you see, something that I seem to understand that certain adults on this board don't is that you just have to ignore it and you don't respond. You particularly don't respond with threats. I am here because I want to address some concerns that I have with Board of Education member Ms. Hoensie. We are all aware that the Board of Education is a nonpartisan board, and that the Board of Education's main concern should always be the safety and prosperity of the students in this district. My concern here is that Ms. Hoensie has allowed her personal and political beliefs, which are somewhat inevitable, to influence her behavior, not only on this board, but online, and has no longer been prioritizing the students in this district. As a former student, as a former student and a member of Nashua, and I plan to be here for a long time, I am concerned that Ms. Hoensie has not only acted inappropriately, but unsafely towards our students. And despite what has been brought forth this evening, this is not just a matter of dissenting opinions. This is a matter of behavior of a public official, not against other public officials, because that is somewhat inevitable in politics, but against students. Students who are sixteen, seventeen, eighteen years old, getting ready to enter the world, getting ready to apply for colleges and start their further education. And something that specifically I would like to address is Doris's behavior on Facebook. As was brought forward earlier, what you say on Facebook doesn't go away. It stays in hyperspace. I've been on that end, being the organizer of the walkout and the March for Our Lives. I know what it's like to be attacked by public officials in Nashua. And when I was here at Nashua North, I was taught to always check your sources, because no matter what you're putting forth, no matter what the quote is in itself, if your source is irreparable, then your argument becomes irreparable. Specifically, if your source is a racist, a known white supremacist, a misogynist, then I don't care what you're putting forth in your argument or what the exact words are. What you are saying becomes that. And no matter what you type, the message you convey is that of the source you are quoting. You know, it's a valuable lesson to learn. Having just finished my first year in college, you gotta check your sources. If you don't, you could be caught for plagiarism, you could be, your whole argument could be ruined. So I not only urge you to step down, but I also urge you to start considering the fact that you are not prioritizing students in this district. You are not prioritizing the benefit of not only the students, but the way the district operates as a whole. And I also urge you to start checking your sources before you post on Facebook, because what you says doesn't go away. I'm nineteen years old, and I know that, and what I have seen over the course of the last year or so since the March for Our Lives, and very much so in the last month, is that the students of this district have behaved with more poise and more respect towards each other than you have towards any of these students, and that is disgusting, for lack of a better word. You are a full-grown adult with a fully-developed brain. You should know how to use it and where to draw the line and how to be an adult when interacting with young adults. We don't have fully-developed brains yet. I will admit that. And yes, we need to be taught how to regulate our emotions still. That's very valid. But the fact that we can operate with more poise and respect towards each other than you are able to towards students is not excusable, and you need to learn how to interact with people online. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Alexandra Jaffrey. And if I could just ask our audience members to hold both the applause and the boos that I'm hearing, so that people can speak without interruption, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Alex Jaffrey. I live at 5 Poliquin Drive in Nashua. I only have a couple things to say tonight with regards to Board Member Ms. Hoensie. There's a term used for behavior online, for something that happens online called signal boosting, which is, what it means is when you take a message that may be in a public forum, and you amplify it, and you send it out to a much larger group of people who will be able to see it. Now, a good allegory for this maybe is, a lot of people here tonight have talked about how Facebook is a public place. Anything you post there is public. Another public place is Boston Common. I could go stand in Boston Common and shout something out at the top of my lungs, or I could say it in a regular voice, and it would be something said in a public setting. That doesn't mean that a lot of people are gonna hear me, doesn't mean a lot of people are gonna see what I'm saying, doesn't mean that, it doesn't mean that there will be, you know, a massive reaction to what I say. And that's something that people understand when they post online, that if you post on your personal page on Facebook, regardless of whether it's set to be public or private, the people you expect to see are the people who follow you, the people who are friends with you. There's an expected audience. Now, when someone else takes that message and reposts it on a larger page with a call to go to that original posting and respond in a negative manner, I think that that is very different from just having a dissenting opinion in a public place. And I think that the fact that this was done by an elected member of the school board to a student is unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Dave Scolera.
Somebody forgot their sunglasses, please. Lost and found. Good evening. My name is Dave Scolera, 19 Bloomingdale Drive in Nashua. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak. I'll start by just saying that elected officials in our city need to be held to a higher standard, and they need to help hold themselves to a higher standard. Frivolous debate on social media, of which many of us, me included, kind of make a habit out of it, are guilty of. It takes a different meaning when you're an elected official and represent our city. It's never appropriate for an adult on our Board of Education to openly debate with the views of a student regardless of whether that student is engaged in the debate. Furthermore, it's not the job of a BOE member to point to students as to teach them a lesson for doing so. You know what an adult member of the Board of Education should do when a student posts their opinions online? They should applaud that student for having the courage to speak their point of view. That isn't a soft response due to social emotional learning. It's the basic decency of an adult as an authoritative person supporting a student for expressing their own ideas. Instead, what we saw a Board of Education member do in this case is not only point to their Facebook page, but then in the comments, which was even more disastrous, one poster said, "Thank you, the student should," in capitals, "receive heavy backlash for this." And the Board of Education member replied to that person directly on that comment, "Sadly, that is not likely to happen." That they, sadly that the person won't receive heavy backlash, and then going into why, because using social emotional learning as a reason. There's no way to mix those words. That's exactly the quote. "Thank you, the student should receive heavy backlash for this." And the Board of Education member says, "Sadly, that's not likely to happen." I don't see where there's a debate and how that is inappropriate. Also, there's never a good reason or rationalization to quote a piece of writing that focused on white supremacy written by an individual whose only notoriety is for being a white supremacist. I get the Thomas Jefferson debate. That doesn't work. Thomas Jefferson had a lot of evil things, but he was also a president and had many quotable works in the public sphere already that are used positively. If somebody was using a white supremacist piece to support their opinion from Thomas Jefferson, I would agree with that point of view. But the fact that this author is only known for being a white supremacist, and the piece that was being quoted from was from an article that was white supremacist and promoted white supremacy, there is just no excuse for that. This board member continues to push those same extreme ideologies in an attempt to drive their individual point of view without putting proper focus on what's best for the students and teachers in our city. And finally, to try to intimidate the president of this BOE and our superintendent by saying that they had inappropriate or illegal meetings with other board members is laughable and plain wrong. I'm hoping that board members have dozens of ad hoc conversations per week without calling a meeting to do so, and everybody knows that's the case. She doesn't need a vote to issue a statement. She was elected and then voted on by her peers to be the president, so she doesn't need a meeting to issue a statement. Her call at a member to resign isn't a definitive action, it's a request. There's nothing binding in putting that request out. It's just a request to do so. Same thing with the Nashua Teachers Union, same thing with our superintendent. Now, if the board were to censor this member in action, I would suggest they take. That would require a vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Maria Finnegan.
Hi there. I'm Maria Finnegan. I live at 1 Clock Tower Place. The police are often in my neighborhood, so I'm not concerned about that part of it. I also don't live in fear. As someone who's grown up in our modern society, and a lot of people do, but that's just not how I live my life. So, didn't expect to speak today. I'm relatively new resident of Nashua, but after coming and, you know, being a part of this community, I really want to be involved, as involved as I can, and hopefully have my own children someday in the Nashua School District. And I feel that I need to speak up in support of Heather Raymond, the school board, the decisions that they've made, the children of Nashua, and human decency, honestly. And I would like to focus on those last two, because this is about the children of Nashua, right? That's why we're here, right? This is about the future, future generations of Nashua. And I have heard people come in here with their own agenda, talking about a witch hunt, talking about things that have been done to them, how they felt targeted, and that's confusing, because I thought we were here for a very specific thing. You know, people are talking about making this political. I've heard words like witch hunt and collusion come up. I'm not trying to make this political, but I feel like people are, which I find confusing, because as my first experience of a school board meeting, I thought this was something that had to do with children and students. And honestly, this is a very specific incident. It comes down to facts. There are screenshots. There is a student who probably understands Facebook, understands the rules, who probably was extremely confused by the fact that an adult turned something on them. They shared their views, and suddenly it was everywhere, and they were getting phone calls, harassment, you know, their parents were scared. Are your parents supposed to be scared, you know, about their kid to something like this? They're not prepared for this. They've already got too many things to worry about, honestly, and now they got something else going on when they have an adult, an elected member of the board, putting their kid on blast, as you would say. So I think when you look at the facts, when you look at what the board has done, which I believe they are acting out of human decency and compassion, which I mentioned before, this is pretty obvious to me that this is nothing political. This is just something for the kids. And I would like us to keep that focus and look towards the future to a place that's more including, that does allow for, you know, free speech of our students, but also holds our adults accountable, because what kind of precedent are we setting if we're going to allow adults to share things like this? And I know I came of age in Facebook, and I know that kids get it more than people who are older. My mom displays that all the time with her Facebook etiquette. So I just, I want to really make sure that this decision is something that keeps the kids focused first, and I feel like the board and Heather Raymond have done that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Kathleen Labonte.
Yes, good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm Kathleen Labonte from Hennecker, New Hampshire. I was on a school board in Hennecker, and quite a similar situation, where I was one of different thoughts and opinions and process for making decisions for my community and helping, you know, respect my community and my, the parents and the students. And so I was always in a contrary position, it seemed. But that being said, I am here for Doris. She has the most incredible reputation. It works diligently for parents and students. And one of my concerns is, I actually, I actually found, when I was on the school board, a 1994 Code of Conduct by the New Hampshire School Board Association for local school board members. And I searched everywhere to see if this Code of Conduct was still disseminated, and I have not seen it anywhere. So I brought copies to, for the whole board, and, but I just want to bring up a couple of them. One was to adhere to the principle that the school board shall confine its role to policymaking, planning, and oversight, while the superintendent shall administer and manage our schools while implementing the policies of the board. And to recognize that the strength of the board is acting as a board and not as individuals. And there's about twelve different things here that are very good to go through and remember. And the other thing that I found, just a current article, K through 12, "What Explains Our Failing, Flailing Public Schools." And I ran out of ink, so I couldn't print all that out for you, but I brought two copies. And what I will do is email all of you the whole article, because it also has some video that goes with it. So, moving forward, I want to say that I was a volunteer for the Billy Graham Northeast thing that came through to, to bring, to try to bring people back to religion and to God. And so while I was volunteering for this, I was at a training session, and the training session, there was a young girl that got up to speak from the organization, and she said, "We were told that when we were going to do some missionary work, we were told that we were gonna go someplace, we were gonna be someplace really dark, and really, you needed to wear your shield, you needed to be mentally ready, you needed to be physically ready, because this place is dark and is in need of a lot of help." And that place, when she mentioned it, was Nashua. And Nashua, I couldn't even believe it. I thought she was gonna tell me some of the country, you know? I thought she was gonna say some place that I'd never even heard of. So what I'm trying to say to you is, the truth and the light of this situation is there for the public to see. We're getting, we're getting mixed messages here, but the truth and the light is all documented, and there was something that went on behind the scenes between three entities, between the school board and the superintendent and the teachers' union, something. And so the truth is out there, and what I'm saying to you is that this board has a chance to really look at all the documentation. You can, most of it's on, I've read on Granite Rock. You can look at everything on, all the documentation. You have the documentation. You know the truth. And what I'm begging you is that you can bring this situation under control. And Doris is an elected official, and she's doing a really good job. She doesn't speak the way you do, or you, or you, but she has, she has done, she does her homework, and she brings to this table her homework. And I'm saying to you that it would be horrible that if you didn't get this under control, and if you didn't recognize where the mistakes were made, and just atone, just ask, you know, just say, "You know what? We did make mistakes, and we need to, we need to correct them." And then get back on to what needs to be done for the children of this community and for the parents. And the school, the school board represents the parents and the students, not the superintendent, and not the teachers' union. And so I'm asking the school board to reread, you know, the Code of Conduct, reread this, read this article that talks about why the schools are flailing and failing, that... read this article that talks about why the schools are flailing and failing, that, just to quote one paragraph, "Educational officials are obsessed," and it does seem so, "with propaganda, but indifferent to knowledge. If candid members of the establishment would tell you they have a bigger job, a higher calling, their new responsibility involves creating..." This is what's going on. Their new responsibility seems to be creating a different country and a new kind of citizen. And we are teaching as little as possible, and we're indoctrinating as much as possible. And that's, you can read that, you can go and Google that, you can read that everywhere. It's happening, it's true. So this board, I'm, I'm asking that, you know, I don't have the right to, but I'm asking you to try to bring this situation under control. And, and you have that opportunity, and you have that chance. And I want to thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Okay, so we have three people left. If the, we could try to keep ourselves brief, we've been going for about an hour. I would appreciate it. Thank you very much. Great, thank you. Let's see, Will, oh, and I'm sorry, I can't read your last name.
Albenzi.
Albenji.
Hello, I'm Will Albenzi, I'm from Merrimack, New Hampshire. I'm going to keep this very brief. I wanted to say that I'm in support of Doris. When I first started hearing about these things, I started trying to read about the situation in the newspaper, and the thing that I kind of walked away with was that the argument seemed to be framed dishonestly. I don't actually believe, any of you believe that she is a Nazi supporter. I don't believe that anybody actually believes that an air rifle that is a material danger to the students. And I'm very sorry to have to say that. It strikes me that one of the things that kind of hurts our politics is that we do have this tendency to become hyperbolic and start exaggerating our concerns. So if we are going to criticize each other in our behavior online, I think we should kind of limit it to that and try to keep it as honest and generous as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Greg Indruck.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Board. My name is Greg Indruck, I live at 22 Orchard Avenue. Much of what I would like to say has already been said, and rather eloquently, often by students here, which is what I choose to stress with my short comments, which is, we are here every day that you meet for the students. And that includes all of our activities, your activities. When you represent yourselves, you represent our community and you represent our students. And I ask that you remember, anytime you're posting something on social media, or anytime you're taking an action in public, that first and foremost, you have to keep in mind whether or not this actually benefits our students, and whether it is in the interest and safety of our students. So thank you.
Thank you. And Anais Durant? Did I say it incorrectly?
My name is Anais Durant, and I am the student mom. And I'm sorry, my English is not the best. I will try my best to... I don't want to say too much, but because everything you brought is in this paper, and it's still there forever. Just, I would like to ask you to please resign. You don't need to be a member of the BOE. Supposed to, BOE protect our students, our kids, and you didn't. Please resign.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, your address, ma'am? Your escuela?
5 Royal Oak Drive.
Thank you. And that concludes our public comment period for this evening. Moving on to the superintendent's comments. Thank you all for coming. You're welcome to stick along, around as long as you'd like.
Part of what is very difficult is to follow such an emotional and poignant representation from, from our public. One of the things that I cannot do is ignore something that is so dear to my heart. I have sat here for about two years, and over the course of two years, it's been a We have heard things about particular board members and how they feel, and what they're going through. What we haven't, and we have lost sight, is like why we're here. We're not here for personal feelings about how a board member feels, or how this person. We're here for these kids. I've heard things today that just makes me tremendously upset on so many levels. Students feeling like they're scared, and they can't come here. This forum is not for adults. This forum is for our kids. And they can come to this board meeting, they can come to my office, they can come to any principal's office, if they feel like they're unsafe. You have my support, kids, to come to any venue, public or private, to express your feelings of safety. That is not negotiable. That is not a Facebook post. That is who we are. We are here for you. You have the right to be vulnerable. You have the right to come to any adult, board member, myself, or any adult, to express yourself, and we will celebrate it. Over the last four, five weekends, four of them have been spent with two board members. I have been away from my family because of two board members. That's Saturday and Sunday dealing with this. There are 11,000 students in this district, 11,000 of them. If you multiply that by two, with two parents, you get 22,000. You add that up with, you know, teachers and parents, you get about 33,000. You add up the faculty, 2,400 faculty, it's about 35,000. Not one of you have asked for a right to know. Not one. I've spent more time with two board members than I have with 11,000 kids. If you are black, white, biracial, gay, transgender, this is your home. If you are feeling like you can't go anywhere else, and you feeling you can't fit in, come and talk to someone here. We welcome everyone. And that's very, very difficult for some to understand, and I'm okay with that. We are diverse, but we are diverse for the kids. We have wonderful kids here. They do great things here. And it's so unfortunate that it gets tied up and bogged down on so many awful things that adults have done. These kids have conducted themselves so gracious, they've been beautiful, and beautiful in a way that even if they're wrong, it's okay to be wrong. But it's not okay for an adult, on any circumstances, Facebook, face-to-face, to attack, subtly posting, in any way. I'm not apologizing. I mean everything I say. And if you want to do what you want to do with it, so be it. But I'm not apologizing. I met with that mom that was speaking here today. I cannot, in any way, feel nothing, but I'm just saying I will apologize. I'm sorry that this happened to you. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, kids, that you have to be exposed to this. But that public release was for the community to know that I need some help here, that we're in this together. And people can come in from different places and say that things can happen here or there, but this is my home too. And I would be remiss to say that you can take a stand and walk away from this, or you can get involved. Ms. Raymond, our president, took a stand, and I stand beside her and for her and with you, because that statement was for these kids. For example, on Memorial Day, our kids were out there doing some great things, marching downtown, celebrating the great things that were going on in this community. That should be a social media post. For example, on Saturday, our kids were in the, were in the graveyards, placing flags on fallen Nashua veterans. That's great. That's what should be out there. Ming Dunceble, our kindergarteners, were doing egg drops, laughing, having a good time. Our faculty was there. It was a beautiful day. That should be on Facebook. I hope to see many faces at graduation, including the ones that don't even live here. I'm looking forward to that, because looking at our kids do great things is why we're here. And I don't mean the first graduation, I mean the whole graduation on Father's Day, and watching our kids walk across that stage. That's on June, that's on June 16th at the Sunnu Center. On May 23rd, our kids at Lead Street was doing great things around game night. You can go on their social media posts and see our kids enjoying our parents, enjoying our teachers, enjoying each other. Dr. Chris, I invite anyone to go over to Dr. Chris and see the garden that they're planting, the fruit. They did a book giveaway, they did a bike to school. That's the things that we are about. We had a great teacher, Jeff Leon, who was recently nominated and recognized at the Lions Club for all the great work that he does in our district. That should be who we are. I, oh, this was really, really good. I was over at Amherst Street, the leader in me. How could you not be excited? It was incredible, the kids. They were wonderful, they were playing the drums, they were just interacting with each other, but then it got better. The faculty went up there and did an ensemble that was incredible for our kids. And all we can, and it was just, it was just electrifying. I was smiling, I, you have, we have to focus on that. There is, and I finally want to conclude my superintendent's report, is that I believe that there are some good people out here that want this for our kids. I believe that this district is at a crossroad, a crossroad that we can overcome. And when we get past this crossroad, this forum will be solely for our kids. And that's my intent, and that's what it will be. And some will struggle, some will continue to post, some will continue to say that they'll, they'll hide behind their social media. But I promise you this, parents, and I hope the cameras focus right on me and community members, when anyone goes after our kids, if anyone tries to, to social media or anything, good people will step up and protect your kids. Good people will say enough is enough. And to the kids of Nashua, all I want you to do is focus on you, take care of yourself, focus on your academics, and by God, I will protect you. Thank you.
All right, board member response to the superintendent's comments? Ms. Van Twyver.
Thank you. You certainly have spent a lot of time on this thing. I would have liked to have heard of some of the academic things that were going on in our school. You sent an email to the Grok saying all the things you have been working on, but we haven't heard about those things. So I hope that the next time that we get together, Dr. Mosley, that we hear some of those things. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kaufman.
Thank you. Two things. First thing is, Dr. Mosley, you commented that the students must feel safe, and that student safety was non-negotiable. Well, I want to point out that safety is in the perception of an individual. And I would make the argument that we need to look at some of our athletics that may lead to unsafe conditions for students, particularly archery, lacrosse, field hockey, football, I don't have my list with me, but I'm making the point. Full contact, we had an incident here several years ago where a young person, his first day of football practice, was injured for the rest of his life, and there was a court settlement of a million dollars paid by the city. I fear for those, personally, I fear for those students, and my fear is valid, just as it was for the valid fears of the students that came through here saying that they couldn't be around an air rifle. Well, you know what? I can't be around a baseball bat with hostile people, right? Baseball bat? Can't, a lacrosse stick, a hockey stick? What about those ice skates? The kids might cut their hands. Or in a culinary class, maybe we should take away the kitchen knives.
Okay, excuse me.
Right? So the point is, we need to be very clear that fear is real in everything. And those tool belts, a kid with an electric saw can do real harm to himself or someone else. So if, the difference is, and let me pull this together so you don't get the wrong idea, the reason why we allow students to use those kinds of electric tools, or even participate in some of those sports, which I do believe should be relooked at, is because, or even use an air rifle, is because we have competent, trained adults who oversee them, and it's supervised, and we absorb the risk because we believe we have professionals in place to oversee and protect the kids. That's the first thing. The second thing, Dr. Mosley, you said you didn't make any apology for the press release, that you did it for the community, and that you stand with Ms. Raymond on the issuance of that press release. Let me make something completely clear to the public who may be, as yet, still uninformed. Everything done around that press release, everything, was never discussed by the board and voted. The only way, according to board policy, if you want to look up, if you want to look at board policy, could you ask that person to leave? That's the second time I've interrupted.
Mr., excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Kaufman, I was trying to get a word in edgewise, but you were going so quickly. Can I remind the audience, please, not to heckle, that includes you, sir? I can also, would like to remind the board members that this is a response to the superintendent's comments, so please make sure that you're targeted to that.
Right, Dr. Mosley brought this subject up very specifically, and I am responding to it, and I wrote my response as I listened to what he had to say.
That's fine.
Board policy prevents the board president from speaking as a representative of the board without a formal vote in public. That's a, that's a fact, okay? Get over it, it's a fact. And as far as the right to know law goes, you have, some members of the public need to learn about it. Now, the other part of that is, not only did the president had no authority to issue that press release, nor Dr. Mosley, if they want to issue something privately, that's fine, but you can't do it representing the district, the Board of Education, and use the facilities and resources of the district to do it. All of that is illegal, all of that is wrong. The district should be compensated, in my opinion, for the time wasted doing that. Everything that came from that press release, everything, was based on a falsehood, and you can see how the falsehood only snowballed and made everything worse. Dr. Mosley, I'm disappointed in your actions, Ms. Raymond's actions on this. We had a meeting with our attorney that advised us- We had a meeting with our attorney that advised us to do certain things. Those things have not happened. They were intended to make this situation fair. You need to correct them ASAP. Thank you.
Excuse me. I just said we would not have heckling from the audience. I'm going to have to ask you to leave. When you shout out of turn, that's heckling. If you do it again, I will ask the officer to escort you out. Thank you. And that goes for everybody in the audience. Let's just be clear. Okay. Ms. Hohensee.
Thank you. There were a couple of things the superintendent said, that he has trouble with right-to-know requests from two board members. It's because access to information is so difficult. I took an oath to uphold the law. That means I have to make sure the district follows the law. If I can't get information, I file a right-to-know request. For him to get excited and upset and confrontational about that, there's a problem. The other thing, and I apologize to the parent for getting upset. I think she was given the wrong information.
Okay, ma'am.
I'd like to continue. You may disagree with me, and that's your right. I will talk to the board.
Thank you.
I didn't do anything that intended any harm on any student. When I shared the information, it was to a group that was interested. I had no ulterior motive. When questions were asked, where do I get more information? I pointed them where the discussion was being had. I didn't want to translate it. There were pros, there were cons. There were hundreds of posts. I couldn't do justice to it. When someone said they wanted a heavy backlash, I tried to derail that and point it to the curriculum. It is not any student's fault. How they're affected by this curriculum, I have disagreements with it. That is the focus of my angst about this. I don't mind kids being politically active, not during the school day, but on their own time, that's fine. That's, yes, Ms. Prince, that was my grief with last year. During school time, we have, the taxpayer spends money for educating our students. If they want extracurricular activities, that's fine for them to do.
Ms. Hohensee, please stay on topic and don't interact with the audience.
I'll try not to. They're interacting with me. Well, I mean, I see.
I understand. I sat here, there were multiple public comments that were directed at me, and I did not interact. So I'm going to ask you also to focus on the board.
What I'm saying is, what I did was misconstrued. They all feel that I had evil intent. Can they prove it? Are they clairvoyant? Can they read my mind? Apparently, they think they can. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Do we have any other responses to the superintendent comments? Mr. Guarino.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll try to be brief. I agree that this board should work together. There was a gentleman that made a comment that we're supposed to all be working together. I tried that. I tried that. I do not want a big, public.
Ma'am, I'm sorry.
I do not, I do not want a big, public spectacle. Okay? And I can, I sent an email to Ms. Hohensee. Okay? A private email, except that Ms. Raymond and Ms. Timmons were in on it.
Mr. Guarino, are you responding to the superintendent's comments?
I am, okay. I asked her, basically, what are you thinking? When you quote a white supremacist? I didn't, I didn't make any accusations. I just asked, what are you thinking? What are you doing? I went back and forth with her in private. Didn't want a big, public spectacle. Okay? I just want the public to know that, okay? That we on the board are trying to work together. We don't always have to have these big, public fights. Okay? I want to set a good example. I don't always succeed. You know, being a public elected official, I don't always succeed.
Mr. Guarino, please tie it back to Dr. Mosley or move on.
All right. This is not a witch hunt. Okay?
Dr. Mosley, tying it back to Dr. Mosley's comments.
But Dr. Mosley was talking about protecting our students. And when a member of this board expresses regret that there was no backlash against a student, that's not protecting our students. And that's exactly what happened. Okay? Let's be perfectly clear about what happened. Okay? I question the wisdom of someone using the works of a white supremacist to accept that thesis. Okay? I can't add anything more eloquent than what was added by some of our young people. Ms. Hohensee should resign. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Madam President.
Yes, Ms. Van.
May I suggest that these comments be done in board member time to response? Comments need to be addressed to what the superintendent.
I'm trying very hard to remind people of that fact. Okay? Ms. Oden, please respond to Dr. Mosley's comments only.
Yes. When he said we were here for students, I truly believe that's why we are here. I don't do social media. I know students do it. A lot of the adults do it. I've heard of what is cyberbullying, causes a lot of problems. I had people call me and read what was on, whatever it was, Facebook, I don't know. But when I read that one of the people reading this girl's, one of our students, postings, and the person said, this student, this student deserves heavy backlash. And a board member said, sadly, that's not going to happen. Sadly, that's not going to happen? I just cannot believe that a school board member would do that to one of our students. And I thought, I think it is morally and ethically wrong. So I think our students deserve our respect. They deserve to have their own opinions. And I don't think any board member should encourage others to bully our students on social media.
Thank you. And anyone else with response to Dr. Mosley?
Me.
Okay. Mr. Mosher.
Yes, I would like to comment on Dr. Mosley's observations and his conclusions and his opinions. And I can say that I agree with him completely. That we are here for the children and not for anybody else. We are not here for the difference of opinions that we may hold because they are irrelevant. The only opinions that are valid are the ones that affect the students and the schools, so that they operate in a efficient manner and that the lessons that are presented are something that the students can address to. Given the amount of right-to-knows, I have seen more right-to-knows in the past six months than I have in the past 12 years. And I think that when we are putting out a right-to-know before we do that, that we inquire, you know, very calmly and politely to the administrators and say, what is being done about it? Rather than throw up my hands and say, well, this is a right-to-know law. We got to cover it in 938. That's a lot of baloney. Because why would we have to have so many right-to-knows in such a short time and over a span of 12 years have almost none? I think that that's a waste of time for the people that work in the central office, that they have to stop whatever they're doing and research something that when it is presented, they say, oh, what am I going to do with this? Why am I getting that? Why is this? Why is that? If you don't know, don't do it. If it's not relevant to the students or the school or some other impropriety that may be going on that we wish to report, don't do it. But I support the superintendent because I think that he's an intelligent man. He's got valid concerns. And the students have every right to use the schools as their resource for any reason. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Ms. Porter, did you have a response to Dr. Mosley's comments?
Yeah. Excuse me. Yes, very quickly. What a sad state of affairs that it's so controversial to stand up for students. It's unbelievable. I commend President Raymond and our superintendent for having the courage to stand up for students. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Ms. Timmons? No? Okay. Ms. Scales, do you have student member of the board comments for us this evening?
I do. AP testing finished a couple of weeks ago. I hope everyone did well. May 4th, Adams Family Play was put on by the Nashua High School South Drama Club. Battle of the Bridge for spring sports concluded, South won. Thursday, June 13th, the Class of 2019 of Adult Education graduation will take place. June 16th is graduation for both North and South. South ceremony will commence at 9:00 a.m. and North will commence at 1:00 p.m. Today, the Nashua North Honor Society held their annual flag ceremony for Memorial Day. They did an awesome job. Nashua High School South has finalized their Board of Education Student Representative election procedures. Nashua North is still in process. Prom for Nashua North will be May 31st. Senior week begins Monday, June 10th and ends the night of graduation. See Ms. Flanagan for more information. BGCN members, for those of you who don't know what that means, Boys and Girls who live in Nashua, leave for SNHU for the Diplomas II Degrees Conference, which is May 31st through June 1st. There's also Power Scholars Academy through the YMCA, which has a partnership with the CTE program here. This program is two weeks long, will take place at Nashua North, is for eighth graders who will be freshmen in high school this upcoming school year. This program will also grant students who attend with one high school credit. There is now Nashua High School North Republicans and Nashua North Democrats. Sorry, there's a lot more. NCCRJ came to South. Sadly, I wasn't able to attend, but George did, and I'm sure it was very insightful. And oh yeah, I'd like to make a comment toward some academic programs that have been happening in Nashua. For one, the Power Scholars Academy is an academic program, which will grant an eighth grade student with one credit. The National Honor Society, which commends students for their academic achievement. And then with that, they then give back to their community. Here at Nashua North, I actually just returned back from a sustainability summit, which was in Chicago, Illinois. Fully paid for trip, hotel, food, plane, everything. And there, we learned about ethical sustainability, race sustainability, racial sustainability, economic sustainability, environmental sustainability, and how every other factor does tie into environmental sustainability and how we can make Nashua a better place or our communities a better place. I'd also like to comment on what I've heard today. So I've heard that I need to represent the students or I'm lacking the ability to represent the students of the Nashua School District. And I'd like to say about the marksmanship program is that I said all I need to say on Channel 9 News, and I think what the students that were here last week just needed to see was me be here in full support of them and for me to not just hear them, but listen to them. And I listened to them. And as you saw, that I didn't have my uniform on last week, which means that I which also shows that not only do I represent the students, but I also represent my teachers and I have respect for the students and my teachers here at Nashua High School North. To not show up in my uniform, but to also be here and listen to the students and what they have to say and to not follow a different path or what some felt was right. But I felt what the majority of the students were saying and how they felt while they were sitting in that chair. And I decided to listen and sit here and be silent because I felt that's what the students needed to see. And that's what the students were here for, was for you guys to listen.
Thank you, Ms. Scales. I think you did a remarkable job at the last meeting, making sure that you didn't side with one or the other. Well, she did. I thought she did a remarkable job of being the student rep for all of the students and not just one side of the students.
No problem with just the collective.
Okay. So I'm going to ask that before we do the committee work, that we take a five-minute recess and then we get back to it. I don't know about everybody else, but I drank all my water and I'd like some more, please. Okay? So five-minute recess starting at 10 of 9:00 p.m. We'll be back hopefully at 5:00 of 9:00. Thank you. Okay? It's 9:00 p.m. Our five-minute recess took 10 minutes, but hopefully we can be a little more efficient as we move through the rest of the agenda. Committee on Finance and Operations, Ms. Oden.
First item, we had the Charletab PTO. The president was here. They did a tremendous fundraising and they brought us the plans, what they have, and a $10,000-plus playground, $10,815. So I'd like to recommend the approval of the Charletab Playground Plans as presented, funding to be provided by the PTO.
Second.
Ms. Van Twyver. This handout that we got in our packet does not say that what the fundraising was. It says approximate cost to build things. And it says in the back that it's $17,615. I'd like to know where all this money's coming from.
The PTO had.
Mr. Donovan.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes, the PTO, that has, that's the financial statement for the PTO.
The PTO?
They have a balance, they have a balance of $17,826. They plan on spending $17,615. So all this is being covered by the PTO. They did fundraises for this playground.
Oh, remarkable. Thank you very much. I did not understand that from reading this. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Mr. Kaufman.
I think it's a great idea. I can tell you, we had a proposal from the same parent group maybe two years ago. Very ambitious. Let's just say that one was about $250,000 or $200,000. But these parents have been serious about raising money over the last couple of years, very well organized, and thank them, want to thank them for their hard work. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Guarino, can you call the roll?
Sure. On the motion to approve the Charletab Playground Plans as presented, funding to be provided by the PTO. Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Hohensee?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
I recommend the approval of $315,000 for the technology spending proposal dated May 14th, 2019, contingent upon approval of the FY '20 budget and the receipt of the email discount.
Second, I think that's E-Rate.
Yes, E-Rate.
E-Rate. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Okay. Any discussion? Mr. Kaufman.
I just want to point out that the budget request that was given to us was actually, and the amount that is actually in our budget that has been approved for next year was $559,000, roughly $500. And that the 315 that we're approving today represents the expenditure for the cost of items through the E-Rate program, assuming we get expenditure for the cost of items through the E-Rate program, assuming we get the E-Rate money. So there's a dish, the delta there, about $245,788, right now may be a surplus in our budget. You could allocate it, redirect it to technology or something else, but I just want to point out, the board approved $559,000 in the next year's budget. This request is only for the $313,000, so there's an extra $245,000 that the board may choose to do something, well, or reallocate it to special ed. I mean, it's not committed funds, if I can say that, in a budget line item. Could be reused, repurposed.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. Mr. Donovan, has our budget, I know that it was up before the Aldermanic Budget Committee. Has it been approved by the full Aldermanic Board?
It has not. I think they have a meeting on...
Tonight.
Yeah.
Okay, so...
And that's the first, they may, they may complete it tonight. They have two or three sessions to review it and approve it, and then the full board would approve it.
Okay. So this, the contingency that is in Ms. Oden's motion is we're going to approve this, assuming that they approve our budget tonight or whenever they finish their budget.
Exactly. And then the funds will become available in July.
In July. Okay, fantastic. Ms. Van Twyver?
And we don't get the E-Rate money until that goes through? Or what? We're not spending this 13,000, $313,000 now.
No, we won't spend it until July. The funds won't be available until July, and the E-Rate discounts should be coming through any day now.
Any day, but that money...
But we expect to see the E-Rate discount prior to the need to spend the funds in July.
All right, thank you.
Okay. All right, could we have the roll, please, Mr. Guarino?
Okay. On the motion to approve $315,000 for the technology spending proposal dated May 14th, 2019, contingent upon approval of the fiscal year 20 budget and the receipt of the E-rated discount. Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Ho Hensy?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
I recommend the board approval of $3,500 for the whiteboard animation proposal dated April 16th, 2019, from Green Light Interactive.
Second. Okay. Ms. Oden, did you wish to speak to it?
It was, that's, we had seen a little video for the strategic plan, and that's to go along with the strategic plan. We had budgeted $10,000 for UNH in the survey, and I think it came in a little under seven.
That's correct.
And this is the money from that $10,000 that we'd like to transfer into this whiteboard animation proposal.
Okay. So this is money that we have, we already budgeted. It was a surplus, and now we're asking to spend it on this other item since we didn't use it for that. Okay. Ms. Van Twyver?
This is going to be posted on the web, is that it? Where is this going to be used?
It's up to you.
Okay. Well, it's going to be posted in multiple platforms. It will be tweeted out, it will be on the website. It's just a way to publicize, it's an innovative way to publicize our plan.
So tweet and the web.
The website, what else?
Yes. So, website, tweet, it'll be part of the rollout and also what we call the organic piece of the strategic plan.
YouTube?
Yeah, actually, that's where the clip is, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. I'm sympathetic to the intent of this, and I know the money is sitting there. However, I will be voting against this for the simple reason is I would like to see the strategic plan and its recommendations. The plan, I think, should be approved before we agree to spend money on promoting it. So I'll be voting no at this time.
Okay. Any other comments? All right, seeing none, Mr. Guarino?
On the motion, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
No.
Ms. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Ho Hensy?
No.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
I have seven yeses and two noes. Motion carries.
Okay.
Recommend the approval of the lease with First Church of Nashua for the Title I preschool, funding by the Title I grant.
Second.
And that's $48,888.
Okay. Ms. Oden, are there any changes in this from the prior lease?
Yes. Let me see, it went up a little over $3,000, was it, Mr. Donovan?
No, it only went up about $800.
Okay.
Okay.
Other than that, there were no changes compared to the lease we've had the last couple of years with them.
Okay. And is that $800 within our budget?
It's in the title, it'll be in the Title I budget, yes.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else have any questions, comments? Okay. Mr. Guarino, when you're ready?
Okay. On the, on the motion to approve the lease with First Church of Nashua, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Ho Hensy?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Recommend the approval of the school bus transportation agreement between the Nashua School District and First Student for the 2019-2020 school year.
Second.
It's approximately a 3% increase. We could, the lease was up, our contract was up with them this year, and Mr. Donovan approached them about maybe a one or two-year extension, and they agreed to a one-year extension at 3%. So, in the scheme of things, when there's not a lot of competition, I think we did okay.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes. I'd like to ask Mr. Donovan about the service that this school, this bus company gives us. My neighbor is complaining that, well, let's see, that there's been a lot of breakdowns of the equipment and it's not being repaired correctly or quickly. She says there's some fleet that should be aged out and they're not being replaced. There are 30 drivers short on a particular day, at least 30, maybe less, but yet the drivers are doing more routes, and she was thinking that maybe we should get a discount for that. I don't know, you need to talk about that. Then I asked her about the times that there have been late. I think before I am willing to approve this is that we have some answers to those things. It's not the first time that I've, you know, Mr. Donovan, that I've heard complaints about this school bus company. And there have been few, I can remember Ms. Oden complaining about tardiness and the way the bus company does their business. So I would, I would say that there needs to be some, if there are problems, that we should hear about it here at this board, outside of, you know, what my neighbor is talking about. So, can you respond to that, please?
Somewhat, yes. First of all, I believe your neighbor may be an employee of this company.
Correct.
So...
I understand that...
That, that's, that's, I would suggest all of what your neighbor is telling you is not accurate, though are we struggling? Yes, we've been struggling for bus drivers for a number of years. The economy is in such a way that it's difficult to find bus drivers. To become a bus driver, it's usually a two- to four-month training. You can't just sign up and say, "I'm going to drive a bus." So it takes a while to get people in. So the bus driver shortage has been a struggle for the last few years, it continues to be. We even this year told our teachers that this spring they needed to keep their field trips between 9:00 and 1:30, that we couldn't extend further field trips because we needed drivers around to bring students back and forth to school. So I can speak to those things. If there's a couple of other things, if you want to send me an email tomorrow, I can look into the other specifics. But, you know, I'm aware of the individual you speak of, and I would just say that a lot of times those complaints are not valid.
Is there no way that we could put some pressure on them to, I mean, if these, if these buses are breaking down and not turned over...
I haven't, I haven't heard that at all. We have in our contract, and it even says in here in section 16.5, that we have a, a bus can't be over a certain amount of years old. But like any mechanical device, you know, it could be five years old and just not be a great bus versus it could be 10-year-old and be a great bus. But we do have the limit on the age the buses can be. That's in this new addendum also, or keeping that same value. I have not had a lot of complaints about...
About buses being late to pick up or deliver kids home?
There's always some complaints about buses being late, yes.
But not obsessively.
Not, not any more than there have been other years. And as far as the repairs of the bus, I mean, that's a, you repair the buses on a regular basis. I know that certain drivers like to have their bus every day, but if they're going to have their bus every day, when's it ever going to get fixed?
Mm-hmm. I never heard that complaint, but, you know, that they didn't have the same bus every day.
Yeah.
Well, like I say, it's been, two or three times have I talked to you about this problem before, and I'd like not to have to hear about it again. And somehow, if we can get this, this bus driver happy, or all bus drivers happy, I would appreciate it.
Sure. And I'd like to hear from someone other than that one bus driver. I guess that's my point.
Well, granted, I agree with you, but I'm only one person, so not, people don't generally talk to me about their problems with the school district, to be honest with you. I have had another complaint, which I'm going to bring up later on, about another issue. But I'm, if they come to me, to me, it seems like they really are, got a problem, but, and I trust this person very well. I mean, it's been a year, a neighbor for a long time, and...
All right. Like I said, any specific concerns, I'm more than happy to look into them.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Guarino?
On the motion to approve the school bus transportation agreement between the Nashua School District and First Student for the 2019-2020 school year, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yeah.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Ho Hensy?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Recommend approval of $52,111 for the Nashua High School North Tennis Courts Repair from Vermont Tennis Courts, per their proposal dated May 7th, 2019.
Second. Okay, any discussion? Mr. Donovan?
Just make a note that the, there's a typo in the motion, it should be $52,711.
Okay.
Yep.
So, the motion should read $52,711.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. I just want to point out that they are definitely in need of maintenance and repair. There's some gaps that are pretty big that can cause injury, so this is definitely needed at this point in time.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. Okay. Seeing no further discussion, Mr. Guarino?
On the motion to approve Nashua High School North Tennis Court Repair for $52,711, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Mosher?
Absolutely.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Ho Hensy?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Recommend the approval of the fiscal year 19 April Transfer Report as presented and accepted at the May 14th, 2019 Finance and Operations Meeting.
Second. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Guarino?
On the motion, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Ho Hensy?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Oden? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, you are correct, we did not extend. Ms. Oden, did you want to make that motion?
I make a motion to extend at least 30 minutes to try to finish our business.
Okay.
Second.
Ms. Van Twyver?
We've got quite a bit of left here on our agenda, and I'd like to see us complete it because I want to make sure I get my new business in too, and my comments, so, can we extend it for a little bit longer than that?
I think we can do whatever we want.
Okay.
Mr. Kaufman?
I move to amend her motion to extend one hour.
Okay. Mr. Kaufman?
I'll second the motion, but I'd like to speak to, I think we should extend the meeting to complete our business.
I'll accept that.
Thank you.
Okay. So the motion was to extend for half an hour, it has been amended to read to extend to complete our business for the evening.
Motion is to amend.
Yes.
Okay.
Now, the business on the agenda, or just whatever business happens to come up?
Well, Ms. Van Twyver spoke to wanting to complete the business, including a board comment, so I would say all business that comes before the board.
Okay. Any, Ms. Oden, I'm sorry.
I would just like to remind people, it's now 20 after 9:00, at least an hour would be 20 after 10:00. Last time, we didn't get out till 11 o'clock, and unfortunately, some of us had been here, a lot of people had been here, four hours. There were board members that had been here five hours already. We have people that have to get up and go to work in the morning, so I would hope that if people are looking to finish the business on the agenda, that we would try to make our statements brief. Thank you.
Thank you. I will echo that. We have members of our staff who have been at work since 7:00 this morning and have to go back at 7:00 tomorrow morning. It would be nice if we could get them out of here at a, I guess not a decent, but before, you know, terribly late.
They can leave anytime they want to.
Okay. All right, Mr. Guarino, on the motion, on the amendment?
On the amendment to complete business, Ms. Oden?
No.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes no. Ms. Ho Hensy?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
No.
I have three noes in 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, yeses, the amendment carries.
Okay. Onto the main motion?[1715.45]
On the main motion to extend the meeting to complete business, Ms. Oden?
No.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes no. Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
No.
Okay, I have six yeses, three noes, motion carries.
Okay, moving right along. Ms. Oden, did you have anything further on finance and operations?
No, that was it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Guarino?
Thank you, Madam President.
Sorry, Committee on Policy.
Yep. Our first business is service animals, IMGA. This was provided in our packets, not today, not for today's meeting, but previous meetings. We were told to hold on to them, so everyone should have a copy. So I move to approve proposed policy, IMGA Service Animals.
Second.
We had, this has gone, had gone back a couple of times. We had two small changes. We took out the word "in" and we changed the word "determined" to "deterrent," so self-explanatory.
All right, any other discussion? Okay, seeing none.
On the motion to approve proposed policy, IMGA Service Animals, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero. Our next, oh, I'm sorry. Our next policy was to rescind policy 6512, the old service animals for students. So I make, I move to rescind policy 6512, service animals for students, employees and guests of the NSD.
Second.
Okay, on the motion to rescind policy 6512, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero. Our next policy is JHC, Student Release Precautions. This is another, these motions, these policies were worked on a number of times, so I move to approve proposed policy, JHC, Student Release Precautions.
Second. It was a second by Ms. Timmons?
Okay. On the motion to approve policy, JHC, Student Release Precautions, Ms. Oden?
I'm sorry, Mr. Guarino, I didn't see Ms. Scales had her hand up.
I'm sorry.
Did you have a comment on that, Ms. Scales?
Yes. The second paragraph downward says at the elementary level, when a student is to be dismissed, the parent, guardian, designated, sorry, the statement after that one, when it says, "to pick up the child and sign a logbook in the school office." I was thinking that it gives you more detail in saying located in the school's main office, because the school has a lot of offices. And then, on the third paragraph down, I saw more of a lack of consistency. It said, "At the secondary level, the student must present a note from the parent or guardian stating the reasons for school dismissal." But I was going to say that it'd be good to put designated there, because it's not always the parent or guardian. And-
She was suggesting "or designated," but I believe that we are required to have either a parent or a legal guardian. We can't just have another person. Although, do we have occasions where there are aunts or uncles or-
I think they have to be on an approved list.
Ms. Fitzpatrick?
There's a difference between a note for dismissal and a pickup, and this is a note for dismissal, which it has to be a guardian or a parent.
Okay, thank you.
I still have one more question. What does the, reach the age of majority mean? And when it says, "A student may not be sent home, may not be sent home as a means of punishment, except when suspended by the principal or designated," and in all cases, after the parent has been notified, in cases where a student has reached the age of majority?
Okay, so age of majority means 18, and it means that staff members can't just say you have to leave for the day. It has to be, there's a system in place through policy JIC regarding that only the principal or their designated can then say, "You're suspended for half a day," or whatever. Students have rights, just like the rest of us. Okay, did that answer all of your questions?
Yes.
Okay, good. I'm sorry, Ms. Hohensie, I didn't see, I don't know what I did. I didn't notice your hand either.
That's new. I just had a question about the third paragraph. You're saying a note for dismissal at secondary level, a parent can't call? I mean, they might have an emergency? I mean, you don't know, you can't predict. Sometimes something comes up and they call, and they say that my child needs to be dismissed? I don't know. I'm just wondering if that precludes it.
I don't know. Ms. Fitzpatrick?
Generally, in the case of an emergency, a parent would come in to pick up the student.
Right, but you, a call to get the student ready.
This conversation came up in the subcommittee, and the response that was discussed there is that usually, students would not be called out of class to sit and wait for their parent to arrive. They'd wait until the parent arrived and then have the student dismissed, so they wouldn't be losing time on learning. I believe that was a discussion in the subcommittee.
That was-
That's correct.
Okay, thank you for refreshing our recollection. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, seeing none for real this time. If you could call the roll, please, Mr. Guarino.
Okay, on the motion to approve policy, JHC, Student Release Precautions, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Okay, thank you.
I know, oh, yeah. I move to rescind policy 3241, Dismissal From School.
Second.
Okay.
On the motion to rescind policy 3241, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero. Our next policy is JLF, Child Abuse and Neglect. I move to approve policy, JLF, Child Abuse and Neglect.
Second.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Did you want to speak to it, Mr. Guarino?
Yeah, this is another one that's gone back and forth, and we had a few minor edits to it, so.
Okay.
On the motion to approve policy, JLF, Child Abuse and Neglect, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero. We also have the approval of the proposed JLF, our mandating report form. I thought this was approved previously.
I don't think we made any changes to it, did we?
Right, no.
Does anybody, no, so this, there's no need.
Right. Ms. Fitzpatrick, did we approve this already?
That was approved.
I thought so, yes. I'm sorry, I was talking to the student representative about one of the policies I-
Yep, that's okay.
So, we'll just strike that then?
Just skip that one.
Okay.
Okay.
And so, we just need the rescinding?
Right, recommend to rescind policy 4400, Child Abuse and Neglect.
Yes.
Okay. On the motion to rescind policy 4400, Child Abuse and Neglect, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Oops, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
There was, are you all right, sir?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay.
That was me.
Oh, that was you. I just heard a big bang, and I didn't know where it came from.
Yeah, it sounded like somebody hung up a phone.
Okay.
It wasn't me.
I'm glad that everyone is all right.
Okay, our next, our next policy is policy GBCD. I move to approve policy GBCD, Background Investigation and Criminal Records Check.
Second.
Okay.
Did you wish to speak to it, Mr. Guarino?
No.
Okay, Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. I think I went to the committee discussion for this, and at the time, I commented that it was not compliant with state law, so I'll be voting against this. This was brought to our attention for a specific reason, and I don't think the updated policy corrected that, so I'll be voting against it.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman.
Could we, Madam President, can we have a more specific, I don't remember this-
Do you want a specific example?
Yeah.
So, the advisory that came from the state specifically said that the superintendent was the person who handled these things, essentially. And if I recall the draft that was in committee, which I suggested a change at that time, which was not accepted, that change was not included. It included designated, if I'm not, it was the very first few words, first paragraph. Yeah, it can't be, cannot be designated to anyone else, Madam Chair.
Yes, I thought that the statement in the first paragraph was saying that those are the people who have to be, who could be background checked, not that the superintendent would designate a volunteer to do the background checks, but that that designated volunteer could have a background check on them. Am I reading that incorrectly?
Ms. Superintendent-
So, in the first paragraph, it's referring to the HR office who fingerprints everybody. It says, "The superintendent or his/her designated shall conduct a thorough investigation into the past employment history." So that's a background check and a criminal record check. So, everybody comes in and the process starts in HR. Once the records come back, they go to the superintendent. He conducts that part of it, but we fingerprint all employees and designated volunteers and anyone else that you designate.
If we were to make Mr. Kaufman's, we did. If we were to make Mr. Kaufman's suggested edit, would that mean that the superintendent had to be personally responsible for fingerprinting everyone?
Yeah.
Okay, and that was not the recommendation of our-
My intent was for the state law, as it related to the receipt of the background check that required more-
That's right. So, it's the receipt of the background-
What comes back.
That comes back.
No, I understand the process. I didn't, from my recollection, I didn't feel the policy reflected that. So if you're telling me that it does, then my objection goes away.
It does.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we are all clear that Dr. Mosley does not do fingerprints, but he gets everything back? Okay.
Only he gets it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Only Dr. Mosley gets everything back. Okay, so-
Actually, it's the superintendent, no personal name.
I'm sorry.
The superintendent.
If we could have the roll, please, Mr. Guarino?
On the motion to approve policy GBCD, Background Investigation and Criminal Records Check, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino? Votes yes. Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero. Okay, moving right along, we have policy AC, Non-Discrimination. I move to approve policy AC, Non-Discrimination.
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
Okay.
On the motion to approve policy AC, Non-Discrimination, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Okay.
Policy JLF, I recommend to approve policy JLCF, Wellness Policy, as amended.
Second.
Okay.
Okay, any discussion? Ms. Fitzpatrick?
I just wanted to know, let Ms. Van Twyver know, she wondered about the wellness committee getting a chance to see this, and we actually had a wellness committee meeting after we did it in subcommittee, and so the wellness committee did see it, and they approved it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fitzpatrick. Okay.
On the motion to approve policy JLCF, Wellness Policy, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero. We have policy DID as our next and final policy. I move to approve policy DID, Inventory Management, as amended.
Second.
Okay.
Okay, any discussion? All right, seeing none.
Okay, on the motion to approve policy DID, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver? Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Greeno votes yes. Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero. And that's it on policy.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Garino. Committee on Curriculum and Evaluation. Thank you, Ms. Porter.
Very good. Okay, so we have two exciting motions for tonight on resources. We'll take the first one is, "I motion to accept the 2019 ELA Selection Committee Three-Year Implementation Plan with resources as follows. I know this is lengthy, but I want to give it due justice. In year one, 2019-2020, as a guided resource, a guided reading resource, Fountas and Pennell Classroom in grades K to five. In year two, 2020 to 2021, as a word study phonics resource, Foundations in grades K to two. As a Reader's Workshop Mini Lesson Resource, Fountas and Pennell Classroom in grades three to five. And in year three, 2021 to 2022, as a word study recess, Foundations in grade three. As a Reader's Workshop Mini Lesson Resource, Fountas and Pennell Classroom in grades K to two. And as an online independent reading resource, RAZ Kids in grades K to five."
Second. Okay, did you wish to speak to it, Ms. Porter?
I just want to say thank you to Erin Anderson and Abby St. Pierre for spearheading this, and to all of the teachers, the kids and families who participated in the pilots, and to the selection committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Van Twyver.
Thank you. I have a question about, on the third page or fourth page, I don't remember which, it says, "No problems with multiple students on this site." Was this tested in our district to see that the load on the server for this product was tested to see that there was no problem with multiple students? We've had in the past, you know, problems with too many students getting on at the same time, and if so, how many were tried or tested? And I have a couple others.
Dr. McKinney?
Can you refer us to which page of the packet you're looking at?
Well, these pages aren't numbered like a technical writer like me likes to have, but it's one, two, it's the actually third physical page, the first side. It says Lawrence Hall of Science, well, it just says Review Committee Comments, Amplify.
Okay. So, I believe that this packet that you're looking at from tonight's packet is regarding the middle school science pilot, whereas Ms. Porter's motion was regarding the --
Am I on the wrong subject?
Yep, elementary English Language Arts Pilot, which was in our last week's, our last meeting's packet, but we didn't get to it because of time.
Beg your pardon. Well, I don't have that packet with me.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Okay, I'll wait.
Okay.
But I do have a question about that.
Okay, okay. All right, Ms. Hohensie.
This is the packet that has the cursive in it, built into it?
That is in the Foundations in grade three.
Okay.
Yes.
I don't have objection to the program. I have an objection to the process that this board went through on March 11th. We had a pilot for a year. The administration never told us that this was embedded in one of the pilots that we were having, and that maybe we should postpone the vote on cursive, which went down, three to six. We were told that cursive is not a priority. We were told by, that it was a recipe for disaster, who was paying for it, and springing things on the administration was not well-received. But then when I went to this curriculum meeting, it was sprung on me as a board member. So, that is my concern. I applaud the student reps who understood that cursive has a value, at least as far as signing your name and deciphering documents, and I'm delighted that it's in here. But I was taken aback when this came, and I'm sure in March, if we had a year pilot, we would have known that this was in the process, and it should have been brought up to the board.
I think that the Foundations program was not chosen because of cursive. I think that it has great value as a word study resource, and the cursive is embedded in that, so we weren't going to make a choice on a word study resource just based on the cursive. Do you have anything to add to that, Dr. McKinney?
I would ask the board to consider adopting these needed resources for the teachers. I don't think it is up to the full board to determine the best instructional practices for teachers. Instead, it should come from the teachers through curriculum evaluation that is responsible for both staff development and the adoption of curriculum resources. Bring them to the full board, where it's the board's legal responsibility to approve the resources. So, I'd ask for flexibility both in the motion around the ELA Selection Committee and the resources, and adopting them in a timely manner. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McKinney. Ms. Van Twyver.
Is Assistant Superintendent saying that he's not going to guarantee that cursive is going to be conducted at third grade? Is that, is that the reason for his statement? I mean, maybe I won't vote for this if cursive isn't going to be actually in the curriculum and practiced in the curriculum.
In response to the board members' comments, this proposal is beyond cursive. This is about kids' ability to read and write, understand phonics, understand letter-sound correspondence, and be able to grow as learners. Cursive is included in here, so is manuscript. So, this is a combo package for three years for much-needed, high-quality resources that a selection of educators from every school, every grade level, every field participated in and approved all these resources. I don't think you could find a more comprehensive process. So, you could look at the small picture of cursive, or you could look at the big picture and the impact that this could have on the entire district. The choice is yours. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Hohensie?
Thank you. No one is criticizing the value of the overall ELA program. Assistant Superintendent has asked us twice and has not directly answered the question. I think this is, I mean, why do we, why do voters elect a board to oversee the district if it's not our purview to ask questions about what's in the curriculum? I find it disrespectful. I asked a direct question, I didn't get a direct answer. Ms. Van Twyver asked a direct question, is this part of that curriculum going to be used? We got no answer. I'm not impressed. Thank you.
Okay. Dr. McKinney?
The answer is yes. Cursive's in there. We're going to do it. If board members would like to see the actual lessons that those are in there, I'm happy to provide it. Again, for the record, the answer is yes for cursive.
Thank you, Dr. McKinney. Something new, Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes, thank you. I'm glad that you had told us that it would be in the program, but I think you can understand the surprise that we had that such a strong, strong attitude towards not teaching cursive was presented, and then the fact that we find out that it is in this curriculum that you people want, but you never brought up the fact that might make us more willing to do it, to vote for it. But that's the way you want to work, that's the way you work.
Thank you, Ms. Van Twyver. And just two, for my own understanding and continuing education, the way that these pilots work are that multiple teachers pilot multiple different curriculum, and then they all meet together and kind of vote and decide on which one of these multiple curriculums best meets the needs of the students in the district? That's how it has been done in the past, and that's how it was done here?
Yes, to both.
Okay, great. Mr. Kaufman?
Yes, and that makes a lot of sense. My recollection is in past practice, the administration came to the board and asked for permission to do a pilot, and explained to us what it was, what it was going to be, and the board would approve it because it involved money, time, resources, curriculum, given or not given. The board approved the pilot, and then a report was given to the board, much like this, with a recommendation from the various committees, and the board would take action. I think the issue here is that, especially, I don't want to rehash everything that was just said, but we had a very heated discussion about cursive. This, the actual existence of the pilot wasn't disclosed at that time. I'm reminded of the same thing that happened with professional development around the new grade book, where it was implemented by the district, the board was never notified. We didn't, it was implemented 24-day instances of professional development and the board in August, and the board never saw the contract until October. So, there's a trend here that we see of things being implemented without prior approval, kind of it's an emergency thing at the end, and that's what you're finding, that's what the resistance is about. It's about the practice of not informing the board upfront, rather trying to just jam it down at the back end. And that's what we object to. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. Could someone refresh my recollection of how many years long this pilot was? Was it a three-year pilot? Do you know, Dr. McKinney? What year?
We're speaking about ELA?
Yeah, the ELA pilot.
One year.
One year, okay.
At the June Curriculum Evaluation Committee meeting, in response to board member concerns, I will present any pilots that will be going into the next school year at that meeting. So, there'll be full knowledge to all board members at the Curriculum Evaluation Committee meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right, it appears that we are ready for the roll. On the ELA Three-Year Implementation --
Implementation.
Implementation Plan.
On the motion to approve the 2019 ELA Selection Committee Three-Year Implementation Plan with Resources from Fountas and Pennell and RAZ Kids. Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Greeno votes yes. Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Okay, we have a second motion. Again, thank you to Lisa Janosik, who I see sitting in the audience very patiently. Thank you for all of your hard work on this, and she did an excellent presentation at our last curriculum meeting. So, I move to accept the Science Selection Committee's recommendation to adopt Amplify Science as the science resource in grades six through eight.
Second.
Okay, did you wish to speak to that, Ms. Porter?
I, again, attended this meeting, and it was a very thorough, thorough evaluation, multifaceted, and it's a very exciting program. I'm thrilled that they're choosing this, and it's going to be a great addition to our science program. Our students are going to enjoy it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kaufman, and then Ms. Van Twyver.
Yeah, I'd appreciate a recollection, maybe someone can provide me the information because I don't recall. I remember that two teachers were used, and these were, you know, people who have done evaluations in the past. I don't question the people, the resources, the time and effort, but I believe it was just two teachers, was it two classes? How many schools? Was it at least two schools? I just want to try and understand the scale and scope of the evaluation, and, and based on that knowledge, I'll decide how I'm going to vote.
This was thoroughly discussed at the curriculum meeting?
And I'm saying I don't recall that, and I remember the two teachers, but I don't remember how many schools or the extent.
Okay. Dr. Janosik, do you mind stepping down?
And I, I can just say that I was part of the pilot, I don't know if you call it, the team that looked at all of the resources and listened to the parents and the teachers that were involved in the pilot, and there was overwhelming support for this resource over the other resources for a lot of reasons. So, I thought it was a fantastic two-day, well, one day, and I really enjoyed hearing from everybody what they liked and didn't like about various options.
To answer some of your questions, and I can give you a broader overview of the entire pilot, the pilot went for two years. We piloted six different resources. We have 25 middle school science teachers, so they had the opportunity, it was their choice, to pilot one or more of the resources that we had over those two years. We had, last spring, two of our teachers, one from Penachuk and one from Elm Street, brought to our attention Amplify Science. At the time, it was very digital-based, and we were concerned. So, we had a conversation with Amplify, and at the time, we decided that we wouldn't start the, this past year with that pilot. Come January, they had changed and upgraded their program, so it wasn't so digitally-based. So, at that time, we reached out to the teachers to see who would be available to pilot. It was determined by whether they had finished units and were able to begin a new unit. So, two different teachers, not the two that had brought it to our attention, but two other teachers, one in eighth grade from Fairgrounds and one in seventh grade from Penachuk, had the opportunity to pilot two different units for the entire scope of that unit, which was about 19 lessons. So, it probably took them about four weeks to complete it. And then at that time, we had that opportunity to have our review committee come together to review not only teacher comments from the resources that had been piloted, but for them to actually take a close look to see the merits of that program. And it's the best program out there at this point, and having looked at five resources and turning down at least two or three others from being piloted at all, I would say Nashua would be supporting their teachers and their students if they would adopt Amplify Science.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Van Twyver?
Now, I'll ask my question again. Did you test, how many students would be accessing this website on a, on a daily basis? Or would it's going to tax our IT department communication a lot? And also, you said the dialogue, it says here the dialogue box to support, available on the website, response within five minutes. Was that tested also?
It was. Actually, our eighth grade teacher from Fairgrounds had a classroom in front of her. She wanted to give them, I don't remember if it was the pre-assessment or the mid-assessment of the unit, and those assessments are locked until the teacher has the opportunity to unlock it, so the students would be able to access it. So, there she was with a classroom of students, and she forgot the process to unlock the assessment. So, she goes on and she types in saying, "I have students in front of me, and I forgot how to unlock that." And within two minutes, she had a response with steps on how to unlock that assessment. So, virtually, a very tiny amount of time was lost.
So, you feel comfortable that that's going to work for you?
Absolutely.
But how about the multiple students access, you know, from, I don't, I assume that more than one school is going to be able to access this at random times, or could be. Has that been tested out, and is the IT department comfortable that it's not going to overload our, our website? Or not our website, our internet?
The Wi-Fi stuff. That isn't my expertise, but what we did find, we had, we have various classes, not only just the Amplify pilot, but we were piloting another resource in which some of our teachers actually have one-to-one in their classroom. So, and not all classrooms would be accessing it specifically on the same day, because some lessons, it'll tell you that you don't need digital access at all for the lesson. There are simulations that are absolutely wonderful, especially because we want students to figure out the science principles, but with science, sometimes you can't hang around and wait long enough, so to have a computer simulation for them to test out and collect data is absolutely amazing, and the quality of these simulations are wonderful.
So, you feel comfortable that with this product, you're not going to have a problem with students sitting around because they can't get through the internet fast enough?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you, just from Ms. Van Twyver's inquiry, so there are really two things. There's the internet act, the machine access through the Wi-Fi network, through our world to get onto the internet, is this, I'm, I'm making an assumption here, but the vendor is hosting all this stuff, and our students just access it. Is that right?
Actually, everything that is on the site, minus the simulations, can be downloaded for offline use. So, any of the videos, any of the projected images, any of the readings, all of that can be downloaded, and what some of the teachers are doing is that they're downloading it either to a flash drive or putting it up on their Google account, so they would have access to that.
That's the spot where it would more likely impact the performance of the network.
What, downloading?
Yeah, the disk storage. You have a district email account, everybody goes into mail jail every once in a while.
Right, and that's not where it would be stored. I mean, I stored mine all on a flash drive, and there's a couple reasons for that. You know, if you're having trouble accessing the internet.
Me, gentlemen, I can't hear her. Thank you.
If you're having trouble accessing the internet because of the resource platform, you very well could be having trouble accessing your Google account as well. Something that I've always told teachers is to have videos, have them on your flash drive, because then you're not streaming them, and you're not running into that problem.
I don't, I don't disagree. I think it's a great strategy to have it local. That's, but the point is, that's local storage. You're talking about flash drives. I'm thinking if it's a, if it's a resource available to the eighth grade, that should be on some public drive, so everybody has access to it locally on our machines. We don't have to go to the internet. So, if that is the case, and you're starting to replicate what the, the company would normally host on their machine, then the impact to us is in disk storage. And I'm just, I, I agree, local storage is best for what your purpose is, and I have no objection to that at all. My question is, has IT, do they understand the implications of that, and do they have adequate storage? That's just the question.
They don't need to store anything, Mr. Kaufman, and I don't think that's what the issue is. It's the program itself and the support that it'll give our teachers and our students. So, I hope that the motion would be able to move forward.
Okay. Thank you very much, Dr. Mosley.
Not to take too much time, we have subcommittee meetings that Dr. McKinney and Assistant Superintendent Ms. Fitzpatrick plans to have these discussions, to do it here at 10 o'clock, to put, thank you for being here, again, for students, to put a teacher who's here on her own time, who has to get up in the morning, just like we do, to ask these questions, is totally, I would hope that the board would consider the time and, and the time that we put in for subcommittees for all these discussions to happen. For the record.
No.
No, I attended that subcommittee, and based upon a question from a fellow board member, triggered an inquiry, because we have to pay for disk storage. And we were told we couldn't afford it to keep our own videos. So, that's why the question was asked. I hope they don't come back with a request for disk space, that's all.
Thank you for your point, Mr. Kaufman. However, it was explained to you multiple times that the plan, should someone like to download it, would not be to use disk space. The middle school science coach has advised her staff not to do that. So, if that happens, that becomes a staffing issue, which would be under the purview of the administrators in the building.
However.
I don't think that this is the correct place to have an extended discussion about how IT processes work. If you have further questions, I suggest that you contact the IT department.
I cannot contact the district IT people, number one. I was told I cannot do that. Number two, if they're going to use flash drives, the performance is going to be terrible. Number three, if the other side of that is, we, the district, pay for them, at 30 bucks apiece, it adds up.
Excuse me. I've asked people not to call out from the audience.
Would you please ask this gentleman to leave?
Ask him to leave.
That's more than once he's interrupted my discussion.
I know, but you've. Hey, excuse me, please step out.
Both of us have 40 years in this business.
Please step out, so I don't have to have the officer.
Someone please call.
I'm sorry, you want someone to call the, Mr. Kaufman?
What's going on here? He can't leave?
He's leaving. First of all, Mr. Kaufman!
Interrupting.
Enough!
I was interrupted.
You were droning on. She answered your question four times.
No.
Yes, she did. Yes, she did. And now, you are screaming. You are not only screaming at me...
So are you.
You are interacting with an audience member screaming after we have asked you not to do that.
Could we take a five-minute break?
No.
No.
We are not taking a break. We are either going to adjourn, or we are going to have a vote on this.
Move to adjourn.
No, we have a motion on the floor. Ms. Van Twyver?
Madam President, the reason...
No. This conversation is over.
No, wait a minute. The reason I asked the question about whether our infrastructure...
Yes.
We keep adding these programs that they use the internet for, and if it's going to bring down the response time for the students, it's our responsibility to look after that. That's why I asked her. I was confident that she feels that it's not going to be a problem. So, if it does come up as a problem, then, you know, we've got to deal with it.
Then we talk about it.
That's right.
But that's a valid question. Discussing disk storage and how people are going to download things is not a valid question. That's like micromanaging, and that is kind of interfering with the ability of the admin to tell their people what to do.
Well, in a sense, yes.
That's not a board matter.
In a sense, yes, but downloading means that you have to put it somewhere, and it has to go on a disk drive. So, it doesn't just hang out there in space. It goes on a disk drive when you download.
No, again, I think, I think we're having some generational technical issues where technology advances at a very rapid rate, and that this is not a discussion to be had at a full board meeting at five past ten in the evening. Now, if there is nothing new that people would like to speak on, on this matter, I would say we go for a vote.
Thank you.
On the motion to approve the 2019 EL, oh, I'm sorry, this is the Amplify Science?
Amplify.
On the recommend to approve and adopt Amplify Science as a science resource in grades six through eight. Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Demosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Greeno votes yes. Ms. Hoensie?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes, Mr. Kaufman.
Move to adjourn.
Okay, I don't hear a second.
Second.
Was that a second?
Yeah.
Yes, apparently. All right. We have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. On the motion to adjourn, Ms. Oden?
No.
Ms. Raymond?
One moment. I just want to refresh my recollections on what the, can you skip me and come back? I'd like to know what the personnel are.
Okay. Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Demosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
No.
Mr. Greeno votes no. Ms. Hoensie?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
No.
Ms. Porter?
No.
Ms. Raymond?
No.
There are one, two, three, four, five, six nos and three yeses. Motion fails.
Thank you. Okay, so Committee on Human Resources, Ms. Timmons?
Thank you. I move to suspend the rules as the HR committee met today at six o'clock.
Second.
Okay. I'd like to move to accept the personnel recommendation.
Wait, I think we have to vote on that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
On the motion to suspend the rules, take up personnel recommendations, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Demosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Greeno votes yes. Ms. Hoensie?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero. Go ahead, Ms. Timmons.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to move to accept the personnel recommendation dated 5/28/2019.
Second.
On the motion to accept, to approve the personnel recommendations, is that May 28th, you said?
Yes, tonight.
Okay.
Today's date.
Today, May 28th, okay? Ms. Oden?
I abstain to avoid a conflict of interest.
Okay. Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Demosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Greeno votes yes. Ms. Hoensie?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
I have eight yeses, one abstention. Motion carries.
Okay, the next meeting for the HR committee will be June 19, 2019, at 6:00 PM. Here at the lecture hall.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any liaison reports this evening?
We did have the liaison report. Ms. Gales articulated very well. We met on May 22nd, and the things she discussed tonight, I was very proud of her. She articulated it well. So, the next liaison meeting will be June 12, 2019, at 3:00 at the district office. I want to also point out that we did have a visitor, which was Ms. Porter, who attended that meeting as well. So, anyone that want to attend a liaison meeting with the student reps should do so. She seeked out that she would like to come, and it was, it turned out great. Thank you, Ms. Porter.
Okay, thank you. Okay, unfinished business. The general assurances for fiscal year 2020 update. Mr. Donovan, did you wish to speak to it, or did you want me to speak to it?
I wasn't prepared to. I can answer questions, but basically, this is the document that we've been approving. Superintendent's been signing this for many years. Last year, we had the issue where there was an additional signature page added, and now the requirement is that the board is presented these. We've, I believe this is the second time it's been in the packet. There were a few policies. I reviewed this, compared it with last year. There were a few policies that we were required to do. We have now passed those policies. I will forward them on to the state. And in my opinion, this document is ready for signatures by the superintendent and the president of the board.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Donovan. Ms. Van Twyver?
Quick question, Mr. Donovan. The letter that was sent along with this recommends that you do a page-by-page, a word-by-word comparison between this one and the other one.
We did that, yes.
You did that. And is there anything else that we need to know about the changes to this document?
Not, not other than those policies that have been passed over the last couple of months. Those were the two key differences.
I'm going to accept your statement on that. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Yes, it was my understanding that the last, we approved several policies last time, well, two times ago, and then the last three were approved this evening.
Yes.
Yes, all right. Mr. Kaufman?
I just want to confirm. Everything that we need for this has been given to us?
Yes.
Yes, I mean...
Okay. That's, I just want to be sure there's no leftovers.
In my opinion, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you for the update. I don't, I don't believe this required any kind of a motion this evening, correct, Dr. Mosley? Because we've already acknowledged receipt.
Yes, as long as you've been notified. Yep.
Okay, great. Okay, new business. Excuse me.
I have a question about the general assurances. Is there going to be any update on the financial disclosures of those federal funds? Because I thought that was part and parcel of the general assurances. This is how and why, and then with the particulars of your district.
We have a update once a year in finance and ops on the federal funds. As I've explained before, the grants timing, we've just started to receive the grants for next year. So, maybe this summer, I can give you an update when we've received all the grant funding. But we're just getting that information now, so it doesn't align with our operating budget, the timing of these things. But each, I believe, there's an audit done, and I share that. It's called a single audit. I've shared that with the board through finance and ops for the last five or six years. So, if you'd like, and in the budget book, I also put in information this year also on the large grants. So, there's, there's all kinds of information. If you'd like more, just sort of ask for what, what you'd like, and I'd be happy to provide it. But in my opinion, I have provided what has been provided the last few years.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Donovan. Yes, Mr. Kaufman?
So, you don't think that you should be giving us this financial information coincident with the general assurances?
Well, like I said, it's not available right now.
No, I'm saying...
Passed.
Okay, never mind.
So, this, the signatures and the return of this to the Department of Ed is due...
June 30th.
By June 30th, and we won't know for some of our grants until well into the summer and maybe in the fall?
Yeah, like some we're writing now. For example, one of the, I think, the dropout prevention grant, we're just writing it. It has to get approved. We do have estimates for the IDEA grant. We do have estimates for Title I.
Which are in our budget book.
Right, but like I said, we get those, then we have to write the grant, and because the question will be, oh, you have 3.5 million, what are you spending it on? Well, until we write the grant, they can't answer that question. So, but once we write the grant, we'll be doing that, you know, different, through the, because the grants we have now, a lot of them run through the summer.
So, gotcha.
So, there's just a timing, timing thing.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Hoensie?
Thank you, and I appreciate your answer. I, I don't doubt it. But my question is, from this form, it says that the certifiers, the superintendent and the board president, are certifying that they have informed all board members of the federal funds the district will be receiving and of this 14-page assurance form. So, it's a conjunction, it's and, I mean, maybe there's a predictive, you know, this is what you're going to be applying for. I just don't see that, you know, I understand that you, we don't have all that, but it will, there's got to be some expectation for the department that we will be getting this financial information at the same time we get this, so that we're fully informed. It's, or they wouldn't have a conjunction there. They would just say, "At your leisure." That's my confusion.
May I suggest...
Go ahead, Ms. Van Twyver.
May I suggest, Mr. Donovan, if you could contact the state and explain to them the trouble you're having giving us all this information, and maybe they might make an adjustment to their, I mean, I can understand your problem. If you don't have the information, you don't have it.
But I'm not sure it says in here what, all the information? I think we're getting asked questions about a lot of detail. I'm not sure it says in here, it says in here, the, okay, so I, I'll give you a list. IDEA grant will be $3.4 million. If that's all you require, fine. If your next question's going to be, I'd like to know what you spend the 3.4 million, I don't think that's what this document says.
No, it doesn't. It says, you just want to be informed of what, what we have.
And like I said, I gave in, go back to March or April, that was last year's money. The amounts are there.
Thank you. I, I have no problem, I have no problem.
So, I, like I said, in my opinion, you've been given that information. If, if certain people want more details, I've shared some of those details, but if they want next year's details, simply as a way to say, "I don't think you should sign the document," then that's fine, but I think that's just preventing things from happening that doesn't need to take place.
And so, for my own clarity, we had our budget book, we passed the budget, and there were, there were numbers in that budget of what you expected to receive.
For some of the grants, some of the larger ones.
Some of the larger grants, okay.
And last year's, the grants we're working on now, all that information was in there by detail, by grant.
So, your expectation is that it won't be substantially different than last year?
Yes, and, and I can update that number, but like I said, I don't think this document makes that requirement.
And again, from my own understanding and clarity, when the district is applying for writing new grants, does that information come through finance and ops? Like, once the, once the grant's received, or...
Typically, before we write a grant, we will make, it depends on the level of the grant, I guess.
Okay.
We do need to define the grants better. I think there's more and more grant writing taking place. Maybe when we get this grant writer in place, I think we can put a little more structure around it. Every teacher that writes requests a small grant, doesn't come through us.
Right.
It does get approved by the board on a quarterly basis.
Okay.
But the significant grants, you know, the, the ones that we have each and every year, which are typical, the larger grants.
Okay, and those we have. Thank you. Ms. Hoensie?
Thank you. Just as a precaution, I would recommend that you contact the department, because it says the federal funds, not the other grants, that the district will be receiving, that's future tense, not the past tense, and find out what their expectation is, so we don't have our funds frozen for a week like we did last year. We have an extra month before this is due. There's no harm in asking. I'm sure they give us a reply.
Okay, where is that, please? In the, what page?
Page 15. It says, "I have informed all members of the school board of the federal funds the district will be receiving and of these general assurances, this form, this 14-page form." And, and that's what the superintendent will be signing, and I would be happier if, if we made sure that we did it right this year. Two years in a row wouldn't look good.
Do the federal funds come directly to us, or do they come through the state?
Through the state.
Why can't they fi, figure this out themselves, then? Why are they causing us so much trouble?
I don't, I don't know, and there's...
I'd like to call them and tell them what I think before it...
And it's a, it's a new Title I Director at the State every year for the last several years, so...
The fact is that the Title I money, doesn't that go over two-year period?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll call them. I will. I mean, we spend too much time on this topic, too.
Okay. All right, I think, okay, I think moving on, if we could get an update after you speak with them, I would appreciate it.
I will.
Thank you. Okay.
Only if you let me do for new business.
Okay, wait. I have things on new business that are on the agenda.
I know, but this is my preference.
Which is my preference, so that the public is prepared and we are prepared to discuss it. So...
That's me that's doing that, I'm sorry.
Security grants. So, as we were speaking of grants, here's a grant. We're being asked to approve additional public school infrastructure funds.
Yes, the state has more funding in its public school infrastructure fund. As with last year's request, the state pays 80%. We're required to come up with 20%. The amount that we should be receiving is 469,750. we should be receiving is $469,750, that's the total amount of, of the grant. So, we would be requesting, we need to, we, the school district slash city, need to come up with 20% of that, that's $93,950. Mr. Smith, since most of this work that we're doing is vestibule work, so when people walk into our schools, there'll be a vestibule when they'll first let, be led in the school, they won't walk directly into the school. May require some architectural slash engineering work, so he would like to request another 10% on top of that, or $46,000. So therefore, our piece of this would be $140,925. I shared with Finance and Ops last month my, my forecast for the year, I'm hoping to have a little bit of money left. What I would love to be able to do is use what's left towards this, but the timing of it's going to be such that the way I'd like to manage this process is that we, we request this $140,000 from our School Capital Reserve Fund. That's sort of a balance sheet account that we have at the city. So we, we request that, we need to then forward this, once the board approves this, assume they do, forward it onto the city. The Board of Alderman will then release those funds to us, we can start working on these projects over the summer. If we end up with excess funds in this year's budget that equal $100,000 or $140,000 or so, we could then do an escrow and put the money back into that reserve account. So that's kind of the, the plan I'd like to do for the timing, because if we don't get started on these, as soon as school gets out, we're probably not going to be able to do them, and they'd be quite difficult to do while school's in session.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Guarino?
Thank you, Madam President. I move to approve additional public school infrastructure funds and new award projects.
In the total, in the total amount of $469,750?
In the total of $469,750.
And the use of $140,925 for the school match of the School Capital Reserve Fund.
$140,925, okay.
From the School Capital Reserve Fund.
School Capital.
Second.
Reserve Fund, okay.
Ms. Van Twyver.
Quickly, Mr. Donovan, is this Capital Reserve Fund the one that we deplete all the time and never have enough money in it to do anything else? Or is that?
No, that, well, this, this was years ago, $4 million, and it goes down, nothing gets put back in, so you're correct about that, but.
We've spent an awful lot of money on, on, you know, I hate to be looked at as not caring about our students and their safety, but we've spent five, $7,000, $7 million already. And, I don't know, where's the co- where's the other tw- it's 30% right now that we have to come up with?
20%.
Well, you said 20% by the, the.
The state pays 80.
80, and we pay 20.
Pay 20.
And then you said, Mr. Smith is asking for 10% more.
Well, yes.
So that's 30%, if I do my math correctly, right? I, and I hate to, I mean.
It's, it's not right math.
Okay, we're not, let's, let's not get into the weeds here.
All right, all right, never mind.
Okay. And my understanding is, were we to approve this tonight, then it would go to the Alderman, and they have to approve it before any money would be spent.
To get the money from the School Capital Reserve, the part of the motion that doesn't need to go to the Alderman is simply to approve the, the $460,000. Once you approve that, then the state will release, we can start working on it. We're going to just have to come up with that 20%.
Okay. So what, hold on, Mr. Guarino, what happens if the Alderman say no?
I don't, then we'd have to come up with another way to, to get the 20%, or we wouldn't be able to do the projects.
So those are the two choices.
If we don't do them, we just don't do them.
Right, so if they say no, we either don't do the projects, or we have to come back to the table and see if we're going to do.
Find another way to get the money, exactly.
Okay, so that seems reasonable to me, that we're not, then suddenly on the hook, we have an option at that point.
Right, you don't, we don't have to do the project, if we don't do it, the money would go back to the state.
Okay.
So they can accept them, not do them, and then just give the money back, but when you get an 80/20 split, it's usually a good deal.
Yep, okay, okay. Mr. Guarino?
I just wanted to say that Mr. Smith adding 10% contingency is, is normal in what they do and engineers do on projects, that they do, that's a normal thing to do, so I just want people to know that, understand that.
Okay. All right, any further discussion of this item? All right, so the motion is to approve the acceptance of the school public infrastructure funds and use the 20%, the $140,925 from our School Capital Reserve Fund.
Okay, on the motion, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes, but did you want to include the amount, the total?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, but he has it written down already.
Okay, well, that's not what she repeated, with the chair usually repeats the motion, so people know it wasn't.
I apologize, I was just doing the gist to refresh our recollection.
Right, but I, that is also the motion of record, so.
Okay.
Yes.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes, Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is regarding the censorship of a board member, Ms. Porter.
I move to censor Ms. Hohensie and call for her resignation in response to her social media postings on May 5, 2019, and after a second, I'd like to speak to my motion.
Second.
May I speak?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, the bottom line here is that while board members do have First Amendment rights, we each have what should be an intrinsic moral and ethical responsibility to protect Nashua School District's students. When Ms. Hohensie agreed on social media that one of our students should receive heavy backlash for views that are not the same as hers, Ms. Hohensie must have known that heavy backlash is exactly what would happen. We need to acknowledge the imbalance of power between a board member and a student, and use our influence only to support the students who are in our care. The fact that board, that members of this board are more concerned with the way that our board president and superintendent address this incident, rather than with the incident itself, is deeply disturbing. If our president and superintendent can't speak for us in condemning such an action, what are we even here for? This motion gives each of us a chance to publicly stand for or against our ethical responsibility to protect and not to target students.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Van Twyver?
Is there a second?
Yes, it was second, I heard it. I, I have mixed emotion about this. I was going to abstain from voting, because I don't want to be a part of this at all, because it's the biggest horrendous mistake this board has ever made. Number one, it started off with improper procedure, and if you don't think that's as important as protecting the students of our, then I'm sorry, but that's the way I feel about it. It has been horrendous, that you took a vote, the president admitted to me in an email that it was a majority that she spoke to, I don't care whether it was individually or not, and the fact that no vote was taken by this board before it happened, that mistake is out now, and it has been a big mess, and I would like to use the improper word, but I'm not supposed to do that. This has been the most disgusting thing that I've ever seen. I've never been involved in any kind of this before, and so I have decided not to abstain, but I'm going to vote no, because I think this board needs to start following policy, laws, and procedures. We do it all the time, and the minority is fed up with it, particularly me.
Thank you, Ms. Van Twyver. I would like to refresh members of the board's recollection in the fact that there were four of us who discussed this. A fifth member complained to me, as frankly they do on a weekly basis, about Ms. Hohensie, and so when I said four, five, the majority complained to me, that is completely accurate, the majority did complain to me. Having said that, I, having seen the post by Ms. Hohensie, spoke with our most senior members. I spoke with Mr. Mosher, who's been on this board for 12 years, Ms. Oden, who has a combination of more than 10 years' service on the board, and then frankly with Ms. Porter, who's the most reasonable person I've ever met, and they were all appalled. And so I felt it was my moral obligation to take a stand for the student. I just do. I, I feel like I'm here, I tell the truth, I always tell the truth, even when I make a mistake, I tell the truth. We discussed it with the attorney, the attorney has advised us that we did nothing wrong, that we could take a retroactive vote, we could update the website, which we have done, we can let people continue to make giant circus of this and whatnot. It was not my intention to bring it to the full board, it was my intention to act on what I thought was an egregious overstep of a board member hauling on people to harass a student when we are charged with protecting our students. I mean, we might as well have taken out a billboard with her face on it and where she goes to school. And that's the part to me that's, that I think people who don't exist in the social media age don't understand. If you call people to a student's Facebook page where they have pictures of themselves, pictures of themselves in school clothing, references to what school they go to, references to what sports and activities, and you tell people that it's okay, and that further they ought to receive heavy backlash, that's like saying to people, here she is, come hang out outside of her school. Now, she received a number of nasty, disgusting comments that I won't repeat on her Facebook page. The parents were so concerned for the safety of their student that they changed their plans, and they worked with police to make sure that the student was safe getting to and from school. It just, as a parent, that makes me want to cry. So, if I enacted inappropriately by issuing the press release, so be it. You know, I talked to our attorney, and he says I didn't, so I, I don't know what else to tell you. I mean, I've been accused multiple times of having an illegal public meeting. You know, even in one of the emails you forwarded to me from an outside attorney, when asked if I violated right to know, his answer was no, but she did exceed her authority. Now, I can't argue with that.
I didn't send you an email with a.
You've, absolutely, you forwarded me one.
Awesome.
No, you forwarded me one from Mr. Tebow.
He's not a lawyer.
Oh, he's not an attorney, he just does that? Well, either way, his opinion apparently.
The truth here now.
Well, I, I thought he was, so I take it back, he wasn't an attorney. Nonetheless, no, it didn't happen, you know? And frankly, we all know that I don't need to ask a couple of members on this board their opinions of Ms. Hohensie, because they make it very clear on a constant basis. I have been nothing but respectful and fair. I have constantly allowed the minority voice, I have ca- I've quieted other people when they've called to silence the minority voice. This isn't about any of that, this isn't about me at all. It's about a student who was placed in an unsafe situation, and I don't think that's okay. And I think at the end of the day, we've spent entirely too much board time talking about the actions of a member, and then random counter accusations to try and take attention from that fact, you know? At some point, as a board, we need to decide if we're going to move on or not, which is why I placed it on the agenda. Let everybody have their say and get it done with. Yes, Ms. Van Twyver?
Madam President, this all could have been un- my problem is with the process.
I understand that, that's perfectly fine.
And why weren't you not consulting with a lawyer? This is not an easy thing to, to be dealing with. This, this is serious, and when you cause somebody angst, when she has a right to speak. Now, if you're going to get mad at anybody, how come you haven't said anything to Sonia Price, who is the one that posted this child's name?
So.
And why haven't you talked to the parent who's, who didn't say to the kid, "I think you better reconsider this," or in Facebook, okay?
I think we've discussed this before, it is never appropriate for a school board member to call up a parent of a student. Even in this circumstance, when I'm concerned, it is not my place to be contacting students' parents. We've had this discussion.
It's not my gripe, it's not my gripe, but still.
Okay, secondly, Ms. Price, I believe was misguided in what she did as well, however, she's not a school board member. She's not, she doesn't, she's not required to uphold what our charter says, and our charter says it's our duty to protect students from danger, and this did the opposite. Ms. Hohensie is held to a higher standard, as am I, as we all are.
Well, I still think that this has been blown out of proportion, and, and she's been accused of saying things incorrectly.
Again, there are multiple screenshots of what happened, I've heard several times that she's been accused and that this is a lie. But it happened, and there's photographic evidence, I don't know what else to say. People have to vote their conscience. Like, I got nothing. You do what you have to do for you. I'm not going to convince anyone at this late date.
I would never vote for, for asking for Mr. Farrington's resignation, Mrs. Oden's resignation, your resignation, or Ms. Hohensie's resignation.
That's fine.
You're elected officials, I would never approve of any of that.
That's fine, Ms. Van Twyver, you do what you have to do. I mean, there's no, I have no animosity here. This is what happened, and this is what I felt was the moral and ethical obligation that I had to do, okay? Other people have called for other people's resignations over issues, and I had the right to agree or disagree, as we all do. But there is the facts of what happened, and that's, that's all there is. I got, I have nothing else to say. So, is there any other discussion on this matter? Ms. Hohensie?
I would like to be asked to talk, I mean, you've all had a go at me. I prepared a statement, it's long, and I, that's life, because you made a lot of accusations, and you called them facts. So, these latest accusations have led to a media frenzy that has slandered me, claiming I'm a white supremacist, that's a lie, because the fact is I'm the one who flipped two board members to get the current superintendent voted in. He happens to be a person of color, but the fact is inconvenient for my opposition, so they try to bury it. Last year, I helped Mrs. Scales, mother of one of our board representatives, get 50 petition signatures and run for the Board of Education, she too is a person of color, but that is also inconvenient for my opposition, so they try to bury it. Reason and logic don't matter to these people, neither does the truth. This is a political vendetta, my opposition wants me off this board because I caused them trouble by pointing out their misdeeds. I insist that they uphold the law and the board policies, I've taken an oath to do so, but they want me silenced. Silencing me is their goal, and they will use any means to do so. Unlike the author I quoted, I am not a racist. My opponent is trying to deceive you. My concern is that the district is using a curriculum that will cripple the minds of students, elevating emotion over reason. How does this board propose to censor me? By restricting my First Amendment rights even further than they already have. The board president has been routinely doing that by ignoring my request to place items on the agenda in violation of board policy. Three of my agenda requests were censored from tonight's agenda. This motion would formalize her censorship and allow even more rampant First Amendment and board policy violations. I submitted rebuttal to my opposition's allegations for tonight's board package, but it was not included. That's discrimination and censorship, my opposition wants to control the narrative and keep the public in the dark. I shared my rebuttal of the Telegraph Union Leader and Granite Rock, only, oh, to those media. Only Granite Rock published it, and they printed it in its entirety. Shortly afterwards, my opposition blocked access to Granite Rock on the district servers, we have concrete evidence of that. Two other newspapers were not blocked, my opposition is afraid that the truth of their lying and manipulation will come out. The district is a taxpayer-funded entity that has no business promoting a particular political agenda. Blocking the press violates First Amendment processes critical. These are constitutional violations, not merely artifacts of a political dust-up. My opposition is afraid of the truth, they attempt to block and censor speech at every turn, because what they have done and continue to do is both illegal and immoral. The board was advised by counsel to post my rebuttal on the district website to provide equity with those posting allegations against me. Instead, the board president has declared my rebuttal contains falsehoods and conspiracies, and refuses to post it on the district website. Again, discrimination and censorship. My opposition is illegally using taxpayer funds to promote their political agenda and block all others. My opposition failed to follow the open meeting law when issuing the press release. There is an email dated May 10, where the board president clearly states that a majority of the members each individually contacted her. On May 15, she's changed her story to say, "No quorum, her majority was involved." Later, we discovered she drove to one member's house and contacted him, not the other way around. How can we believe anything she says when she contradicts herself in writing? Ms. Timmons and Mr. Guarino, two members who claim to know nothing of anything, were party to 26 emails that occurred two weeks prior to the press release, in which Ms. Timmons called for my resignation. That she and Mr. Guarino didn't participate in this travesty is impossible to believe. As Mrs. Raymond wrote before she thought she might be in trouble, probably a majority of six, not four, were party to the secret meeting. That's a quorum in violation of the right-to-know law. So what are my allegations, or the opposition's allegations? An 18-year-old student made a public post on Facebook in an ultimately successful effort to return the board's, reverse the board's recent vote in support of J-Rotse marksmanship program on campus. According to the police investigation, which the superintendent initiated, the student's posts were shared at least 126 times. Each of those shared posts were then reshared by many, many times. I reshared the post from Sonya Prince Post, not the student's page, in case you don't know, Sonya is one of my most hysterical critics. I've never advocated violence against any student, I'm opposed to the district's curriculum, which encourages student activism and advocates privacy, uh, the primacy of emotion over reason. My opposition, meeting in secret, violating the open meeting law, twisted my words to accuse me of endangering the student and her right to privacy. What privacy may that be? Courts have already determined there's no reasonable expectation of privacy on social media platforms. My opposition claims I violated the spirit of FERPA, the Federal Education Rights and Privacy Act. That's logistically impossible, as I have no access to student files. That accusation has no factual basis. It's another emotional attack, the kind of name-calling you might expect from children, it's a lie. The superintendent initiated the police report, yet strangely, I was never contacted. The report, of course, concludes that there was no crime, because the investigation was an attempt to use police to harass and intimidate an elected official. There was no student privacy violation or endangerment. Actually, I reached out to the investigating officer after reading the report, which contained errors of fact and omissions. The reporting officer is in the process of updating it, so the report in the packet is not the final one. In particular, the original version contains a truncated quote of mine designated to make it look like I advocated a backlash against the student, when in fact, the quote says that there ought to be a backlash by parents against the social-emotional learning curriculum being implemented by the district without a board vote. So, another lie. So, another lie, this time to a police officer. My opposition also failed to tell the police that the student contacted the union leader days before the reporting privacy concerns to the police. On the one hand, she was looking to publicize her event far and wide with a newspaper article which included her name, yet on the other hand, the superintendent was advising the family to report an elected official to the police for allegedly violating her privacy and inciting violence. Another false narrative, another lie. The majority of this board believes that the end always justifies the means. Their goal is to get me off the board, and they do not care about the process or how many laws they have to trample to get there. I've lost count of how many times they violated the law or board policy. The superintendent and certain members of the board regularly stalk my Facebook page, which is, of course, the right to do so, since it's publicly readable. Actually, this is the second time the superintendent has caused the police to investigate one of my posts. Free speech? Not so much on this board with the superintendent. The first time, I posted a letter from a constituent who accused the superintendent and a board member of being dictatorial. I didn't write the letter, I just posted it. The superintendent feared there might be some escalation. Apparently, he was afraid of other constituents who might also criticize him, so he called the police to investigate. That report determined, of course, that there was no crime. The second time, the superintendent and my opposition have declared themselves to be clairvoyant, ignoring my rational explanation and replacing it with their emotionally charged explanation. I cannot endanger a student by my opposition to curricular decisions, so they ignore the facts and simply soup their privacy violation narrative. My opposition also claims that I support racist ideas of an author I quoted on Facebook. There was no denigration of racial group in the quote I posted. My opposition attacks my character and motivations rather than my actual position or argument. This is an ad hominem attack. It appeals to emotion rather than logic or reason, because they have no rational arguments. Ironically, this was precisely the point I was trying to make, that elevating emotions over logic and reason via experimental social-emotional learning programs in our district is dangerous for students. It undermines civil discourse and can eventually lead to violence. This type of behavior modification program is completely inappropriate in public schools. I want to eliminate them. This is the same type of twisted argument the superintendent used against me a few months ago, when I tried to uphold state law regarding student elections for board representation. He claimed I was weaponizing the right to know law against students, rather than admitting he failed to uphold the law. Again, emotion over reason and logic. My opposition cares only about getting, keeping, and exercising power. They will do anything to get their way. They have contempt for the rule of law, because that's the only thing... And that is the only thing standing between us and barbarians.
Thank you, Ms. Hohensie. You're welcome. Mr. Guarino?
Thank you, Madam President. I will keep it short. I don't know who called you a white supremacist. You were... There's a difference. You were called out for quoting a white supremacist. You were not called a white supremacist. Okay? You were asking the reader to accept the white supremacist thesis. You were asking me, who was reading that, to accept that thesis. That's what you were doing, and I will never do that. Okay? What you did was, you expressed regret that there was no backlash against the student. That's not protecting our students. That is exactly what you did. That's what your words say. That student was subsequently subject to abuse. Those are facts. We can't change... Go back and change those facts. That could have been my daughter. My daughter's a student. Okay? You know, it could have been someone else's daughter. So, I don't think that you understand what happened. I really don't. It's very simple what happened, and I think you should resign, and I'm going to vote for this.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino. Mr. Kaufman?
Call the question.
Okay. Mr. Guarino, can you call the role regarding calling the question?
Sure. Okay. Call the question. Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
I'm sorry, it's a little different here. Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Okay. All right, it passes, so...
Okay, so, on the motion?
On the motion?
Please repeat the motion.
Could you repeat the motion, Ms. Porter, please?
Yep. To censure Ms. Hohensie?
Let me be clear, the word is censure.
Censure, thank you.
Not censor, censure.
On a boarder, that's not what was on the agenda.
Right, but she can make the motion the way she wants to.
But that's not what's on the agenda.
Yeah, I...
But that's what she did.
I believe that that was a typo from Tara, because the motion was censure. Censure.
Go ahead, Ms. Porter, please.
Okay.
Statement that...
I know what it means.
To censure Ms. Hohensie and call for her resignation in response to her social media postings on May 5th, 2019.
Okay, on the motion? Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
No.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
No.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Hohensie?
No.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
I have one, two, three, four, five, six yeses, three nos. Motion carries, six to three.
Okay.
I have an item to put on under new business. Three of mine were terminated.
Okay, I'm sorry, Ms. Van... Go ahead.
And it's quick. We got a letter in our board mail today. I could read two paragraphs, but it says, "I'm stunned at what is being taught, and by my first grader, he was taught what makes a good citizen is dependent upon his service to community. This is not what makes a good citizen. What makes a good citizen is not to be a burden on society. Beyond that, it's his right to seek his own happiness, not what you think he should become. A life... If a life of service to others is where he finds his happiness, so be it, but it will be of his own choosing." He was also taught that people of color are less free than white people. He's being taught to have special considerations for people of color, that they should have special privileges simply because they are of different skin color. When someone is treated with special... Treated special based on skin color, that means that someone else is being treated with less consideration based on theirs. That's racism. It's unacceptable. I've been teaching my son that all persons are the same regardless of color, that they must be treat... Must treat everyone with the same respect and consideration. Anything else is racism. The fact that we have this, which is saying that they're trying to... I'd like to know what we're doing in the schools. Our IDs were terminated, I mean, deactivated. We can't talk to principals. We can't get in. I would like a discussion in curriculum, what exactly we're teaching our students. This is beha... You know, this is...
So, I'm going to recommend two things. One, that Ms. Porter put that on your queue and discuss it with Dr. McKinney. And two, that we recommend to that parent that they contact the student's teacher, because if they believe that the student's teacher is teaching things that they find completely unpalatable and disagreeable, then the first step should be to talk to the teacher, and then if they are not satisfied with that response, then the next step should be to talk to the principal, as that's the person who directly supervises that teacher. So we want to make sure that that parent has a good discussion with the people who are directly in contact with his child. So that...
I believe that you can do that separately if you want. I want this in the curriculum. I want to know what we're teaching our students.
Okay.
I want to be able... So, parents can come and find out and express their opinion, and so we all agree what this community is teaching our children.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Van Twyver?
Thank you, Madam President. As I said before in this meeting, people don't come to me and make complaints. But when I was going to Market Basket one Sunday, this gentleman stopped me and complained that his wife was... Didn't complain that his wife was a pair, but she was a pair in one of our schools, and said that the police have been called at least 50 times to the school. And the other complaint he had was that there are people who... Teachers who are on administrative leave. At least one, he mentioned, was on for a month. So I am requesting that the administration give us a report by school, the number of times the policeman have been called to the school for whatever reason. And number two, I'd like Ms. O'Gara to give us a report on how many teachers are on... Or people in our school are on administrative leave. Now, I know this man was... Who he said he was, because he knew how to pronounce my name correctly, so he's seen me before. And as I say, I don't usually get these kind of complaints or even people suggesting that I bring something forth. So these are... I think it's an important thing, and I'd like to have a report on it.
Okay. Ms. O'Gara, I'm going to take it backwards and then go second first. Ms. O'Gara, are you able to give us the number of teachers on admin leave in an HR committee meeting, perhaps the next one? I know you can't give us identities, because that is a personnel matter, and we need to be neutral. But can you give us the number of teachers on admin leave at the next HR committee meeting?
And time? Teachers. I would...
You would like staff?
Staff and the length of time they've been on administrative leave.
We...
I don't know that we can share the numbers, because then that would be identifying. Like, the number of how long leaves are, because then you might be able to identify the individual, and that would violate their union rights.
Well, let's ask the lawyer about that.
Okay. That's reasonable. Yes, Ms. Oden?
I think it should be a matter of how many have been put on leave during the year. You're not just looking for now, but maybe there were some, and they're back in the classroom. So I think you would want the total for the entire year, school year.
I agree.
Okay. And then, I'm sorry. And then regarding the amount of... Number of times that the police were called, are the principals able to get you that so that you can...
See what we can do, absolutely.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Timmons?
Didn't we have Officer Carrigan did forward a list of all the schools and how often the police was called into the school? We got a quote on every single school recently.
I don't know. Ms. Patrick?
Chris Lassard, who is our security person, sends an email anytime the police are called to any of the buildings, and I can guarantee you, it's not 50 times.
I don't think so.
Okay. So he sends an email to you, not to us?
I'd like to have facts.
I understand.
Okay. So if we could have that number, we'll put it on the agenda.
That's what I can do.
Okay?
Thank you.
Mr. Kaufman?
New business. I'd like a future meeting, a discussion of student safety involving athletic sports and actually including CTE courses as well.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Mosher?
Let me put something in there.
Okay. Why not?
Howard, that's a very good idea, and I think you find the information that through Ms. Chingless, because they... Over the course of the past few years that I can recall, we have had several updates on that, on the... The training of the coaches, et cetera, and the rules that have been passed down as far as contact sports, in order to keep them, you know, in a more safe condition. So I think if you talk with Ms. Chingless, you'll be able to get the information on that. It should be on file, and it should be something also in the policies on as far as the contact sports and being okayed by trained coaches or getting medical advice on, you know, brain trauma. So it's... The information is there, just have to ask to get it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Okay. Moving on... Yes, Ms. Timmons?
I could make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
No, we've already voted. What? Point of order, we've already voted to continue the meeting, and the next thing would be public comment. And why would we shut down the meeting at that point?
You are correct. Do we have any other public comments? Okay, yes. Yes, you have to come speak in the microphone, or else it doesn't get on the recording. And if you could please give your name again?
Joan Dawn.
And where you are? In the microphone, so that our transcriptionist can get it.
Joan Dawn, Hill Ward 9, and I just want to say again, I think that this is a witch hunt. I believe that you feel very strongly about your position. I think that people should be able to read, quote, associate with anyone they want and not be labeled. I realize you're trying to hold her to a higher standard. I did Google the child's name. I was really pretty surprised that she's been, whatever you call that, face paging since 11th grade, maybe?
Okay, I'm not going to allow discussion of a student's private activities at our board member. That's completely inappropriate.
Nope, 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 nope. My concern is that all of a sudden, there's concern for her safety when five years ago she was doing the same thing. Where was the concern for her safety then?
I will cut you off. We are not discussing a student's private behavior at a board meeting. It is inappropriate on many levels.
I am not discussing her behavior. I'm discussing the board's behavior. Board's behavior. Where was her... Where was the concern for her safety then?
You are done. You may leave the podium.
Guess I won, huh? This is going to be great news.
It can be on the news. I will not allow someone to bring up what a student has or has not done at this board meeting. It is not appropriate.
It's public knowledge. She said she Googled it.
Great, she Googled it. Everyone else can have Googled, too, but we have an obligation to protect our students. Board comments. Ms. Van Twyver?
I've said enough tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. This board needs to get down to school business. The witch hunt against Ms. Hohensie is designed, in my opinion, to deflect discussion of the JRTC marksmanship program, social and emotional learning, cursive, student behavior, and failing test scores. Ms. Hohensie is a terrific asset to the Nashua Board of Education and the Nashua School District. In my opinion, Doris is probably one of the most informed people in the state on education, law, and policy. This board has voted, and this administration has declared, there is no retaliation or retribution in this district. Really? The continued personal attacks against Ms. Hohensie demonstrate in very clear terms that retaliation and retribution are very real in this school district. Our students, faculty, and staff are getting a real lesson in terms of what can happen to you personally and professionally if you speak against the will of the administration and the teachers' union. The lesson being taught is, speak against authority, and it will crush you repeatedly and in any way it can. The vitriol I've seen expressed by members of this board is horrifying to me. The vitriol I've seen expressed by members of this board is horrifying to me. There is no listening, sharing, or contrary opinion allowed. The time has come for me to make an apology to the district. I want you to know, and I'll look right in the camera, Jimmy, if you look at me. Look, just straight out? Okay. I want you to know that I regret my decision to bring Jamal Mosley to this district. If I could revoke my decision, I would do it in a heartbeat. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Hohency?
Thank you. I'm kind of amazed at the clairvoyance of this board, that they can take my statements out of context, and they know better than I do my intention. But I would like to also discuss the non-public session, I believe, was used last time to flip the vote. In three and a half years, this board has never reviewed or approved public, non-public minute meetings, which is a violation of the right-to-know law. I apologize for sealing those minutes, and it was a mistake given the fact that what we discussed was in the public domain. What was done in there, the minutes should be unsealed. That's all I've got to say. It was just absolutely wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Guarino?
Thank you, Madam President. I'll be brief. I just want to thank Dr. Mosley for standing up and protecting our students because that's what he did. And as I said, I have a child in the district, and as all parents, I worry about my child in our public schools. And knowing that we have strong leadership in our superintendent, who's going to stand up for, to protect our students, that gives me some solace and peace of mind. And I also want to thank President Heather Raymond for taking action, protecting our students. Presiding over these meetings, which, as you can see, are very tumultuous, she's done a great job, and, and it takes, it takes a lot of hard work and a lot of courage. This board is not dysfunctional. I want, I want to tell that to the, to the people of the city of Nashua. There are some people who would like it to be dysfunctional, and they've tried their best to make it dysfunctional, but it is not dysfunctional. We have, we have a good amount of people here who care about our schools, and, and they will make that promise with me to the people of the city of Nashua that this board will be, remain functional. And I just want to say one more thing. There's a swing dance at Nashua High South on Saturday night. I'm looking forward to it. I did it last year. They have a great time there. So, I want to invite the public to come down and, at Nashua High South, 6 o'clock Saturday night, and have some swing dance and have some fun. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mosher?
Yes, thank you. You know, it behooves me to listen to what goes on between certain members of the, of the board, and I can say that, I quote, I think it's Shakespeare when he says, that things you protest us too much. And they seem to have it, you know, then they want that all their own way. And it just keeps on going and going, and they don't realize what it costs us in, in time and money for, you know, the extensions that they have and the continued requests and demands on the administration for information, which is, got very little relevance to what the, what the, their position on the board demands. And they seem to think that everybody's out to get them. Well, it's not the case. If you did the right thing and you didn't try to protest and, and harm the superintendent and the district as a whole, you would not be into this, this thing at all. And, you know, I've, I've seen other school boards over the, I'm over 40 years in Nashua, and I've raised children in Nashua. And I have been, you know, watching the, the boards as they went on. And we've had a couple of school boards where, when things didn't go the way they, they wanted, they'd say, Howard, and they got up and they walked out, right in the middle of a meeting. Unfortunately, you know, we don't have that happen too often now. But the people that we have, you know, they are protesting, and they are doing everything they can to harm the district by doing things that are inconsistent with taking care of the kids and taking care of the schools. You know, and, you know, they comment about the, the student elections. After 12 years, I've never seen the, the problems that have come up with, you know, student elections to, to the board representation. Never seen it. The only time I've ever seen it is over here now, and only because two people declared their job to interfere. And they've interfered in the schools, they've interfered with the students, they've interfered with the administration, they are throwing daggers all the time at the, at the superintendent. And it's just unbelievable what is going on. And if they could see themselves, the way other people see them, and by what's written in the newspapers about them, they would maybe understand a little bit more. But I've looked at the newspapers, and I've seen that the newspapers have been critical of the same people all the time. Oh, God. Thank God there's an election coming up, and they should run for office someplace else, run for dog catcher, whatever. But I said my piece.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Ms. Timmons, do you have any board comments this evening?
No, I really don't because when Ms. Hohency read that fallacy of her letter, it just, it was perfectly clear to me that she had no clue. And to say my best friend is black is kind of funny. So, no, I have no, it's a metaphor. My best friend is, oh, I, I voted for Dr. Mosley so therefore I'm not prejudiced. I heard, oh, my black, my best friend is black. That's kind of a metaphor. But no, we did the right thing.
Thank you, Ms. Timmons. Ms. Porter?
I want to thank you, Mrs. Raymond, for what you go through and what you put up with. I think that people have no idea what the board president has to do. And I appreciate your courage, your fairness, your even temper, your firmness when people cross the line. I applaud you. I just, I'm so impressed with the job that you do. I support you 100%. And Dr. Mosley, thank you also for everything you do for this district. Your heart is in the right place. You are here for kids. Nobody is perfect. We all make mistakes. But you know what? When you put kids first, then, you know what? You're going to go in the right direction. So, I thank you both from the bottom of my heart, really.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Oden?
How do you follow that? I want to thank Heather Raymond for putting our kids first. I understand exactly how hard your job is. I know the time commitment you make. I know morally and ethically you are in the right place. You're the right person for this. I know how hard it was. I, it's not fun being in the newspaper, but you have done an outstanding job by putting kids first. Dr. Mosley, I want to say the same to you. It, it is not easy to be tagged by some people as not doing your job or whatever, but you, you stood up for our kids, and that's important. And to that student, I want to say, I'm sorry you had to go through that. You, you published your opinion, and you had people encourage others to what, from everything I've read about, would be cyberbully. And I read the police report, and some of the comments you received were just vulgar, vulgar. And I'm sorry that one of our students had to experience that. So, thank you. Thank you to Ms. Raymond and to Dr. Mosley and to those people who put our students first.
All right. Thank you. All right, so, I'm exhausted by this. Mr. Kaufman?
Move to adjourn.
Okay. After my comments. Like, let's.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you had gone. I'm sorry. I was just trying to expedite the meeting.
Very quickly. I went to the teacher-leader presentation on May 18th, and I know it's kind of a weird segue to do that, but I think it was really important. It was great. I encourage everyone to go on the website and watch it if they can, see if you can get the materials. I don't have a favorite. I thought they were all wonderful. But I wanted to bring attention to this, oops, my thing's in the way, this wonderful document that some teachers at Elm Street made to help our newcomers to Nashua, especially our English language learning families and our refugee families, to learn some social norms, to learn some ways to contact their school district for simple things, like their child might be absent today. How do you say that in English, and who should you talk to? These are things that they don't know unless someone tells them. So, this guide is at Elm Street. It's also going to be at the Nashville Public Library. It's in English, Spanish, Portuguese, and I think Swahili. So, giant kudos to all of the work that has gone into making this wonderful guide. And it's not just for middle school families. Any family, even if they don't attend Elm Street, could use this, and it has a lot of great information. And all the other presentations were fantastic as well, but I thought this one needed extra attention. All right? So, that's all I have.
Move to adjourn.